Regular meeting. January nineteen. We'll come to order. Roll call, please.
Hey, Mr. Baxendale?
Yeah.
Ms. Peniston?
Here.
Mr. Muschak?
Here.
Ms. Langgallis?
Here.
Ms. Shockley?
Here.
And Mr. Meglio?
Here.
Okay, we have six.
Okay, this is our beginning of our department reviews for capital budget. Anybody during the evening needs to get up and go, just get up and go. Want to eat, go ahead, just don't slobber over yourself, you're on video. And we'll get going. So first of all, we're greeting the library. We have, I'm assuming we have Mayor Knapp, Sherrell Harris and Lamont Daniels.
Mm hmm.
Okay. We have your capital requests. We'll leave it up to you how you want to address it. And take it from there.
Okay, so our first request is a continuation from previous years for us to finish the Norwalk newspaper digitization. And we should have that completed in year fiscal year ending twenty twenty-three. And the second request is the auditorium refresh. So we were approved for one library last year, and so we're asking for for the other library this year in this request.
Is the other one finished?
Covid sort of stalled everything, so we're looking, we've spoken to the vendor to see if they might be able to come in. Because we have the pod schools now in the auditorium, so we're looking to see if they might be able to do something when the kids are on spring break.
Cheryl, Brian Baxendale, remind me what the other library is?
So we have the main library and the Sono library.
So you're going for the Sono library this time?
So we just were doing the Sono first and then the main library.
Okay.
So Sono is the one that's been delayed, right?
Correct.
You also say?
Go ahead, Brian.
Sorry, the last question for me is you highlight equipment. What equipment do you need, Cheryl?
I'm sorry, Brian, I can't, I can't hear you.
Okay, the equipment you request, what is the equipment?
So basically, we haven't had an upgrade. It's the sound system, the video, the whole system. So like if we have, you know, businesses that are coming in and they need to use the equipment, or if we have programs, we just need updated reliable equipment. And now because of Covid and just the trend, we're going towards streaming. So we need the streaming capability.
Thank you.
Very welcome.
So the equipment, the equipment is library, I don't know, computer software? Is that what you're talking about, Sherrell?
It's more sound system, more tech system, like DDD capability, the ability to connect to Bluetooth, streaming, that sort of thing.
You have any money from previous years that you haven't used?
For this particular project?
Right, or? Yes.
Not for this particular, so we were approved last year and ready to get started except for Covid, so we hope to spend that if, you know, we can get with the vendor and they can get in, we hope to spend that before July.
Okay. Based on, you know, where we are, finishing up the other library and starting this one, how do you see that playing out? Planning wise?
So it's the same vendor, so we hope, you know, they can get started. So we've asked them, you know, if they can come in, they need a full week. If they can come in when the kids are out of school. Right now, we are partnering with Norwalk Public Schools, so we have a pod school and the auditorium. So when the kids are out, they said they need at least a week of uninterrupted work, so we're hoping when the kids are out of school for spring break that they can come in and finish. And if this is approved, we hope that we can get started with the main in the summer. The kids will be out of school, so that won't be a problem, you know, to get them into that auditorium.
What the pod school? I don't know what you're doing.
It's just sort of an offshoot site for the kids, because we have to, the Norwalk Public Schools needed to social distance with the kids and they needed space, so we offered our two auditoriums. So they have a peer professional that comes in and they have the children that have opted for the hybrid model where they're in school one week and you know, online the next week.
What grades are these?
High school.
High school? I guess I didn't know what that was, that they needed the library to distance or?
It was a help to them. For some of the kids, they may have trouble getting on the computers, you know, at home. So they have the hybrid model where the kids are in school one week and out of school one week, and this helps with the kids who are out of school and may need a little bit of extra help or may not have the digital capacity at home.
Franny, this is Alex. The reason why this is really important for Norwalk is that in many of the wealthier suburban communities, these pods are set up privately by wealthy parents for their kids. And there are very few places in the state where these pods, which is the alternative for the hybrid when the kids are not in school, instead of being at home, they're at the library with Board of Education personnel engaging them. And the point is, this is a public offering that families in Norwalk apply to based on their need, particularly those who don't have great digital access at home, whereas in suburban communities, it's a advantage of private wealth. So this is a great benefit for kids in Norwalk and also a model that I know that Hartford and other communities in the state are looking at as a way to, again, make a public resource available to families in need, and so it's not just based on the private family wealth.
Now, where I'm coming from is when you say about they don't have the digital at home, because we'll hear from the Board of Ed in last year, you know, there was budget that every student has a computer, a Chromebook, right? They all have things to do from home. That's why I was kind of asking.
They do, but if they don't have the Wi-Fi at home, they may not have the connectivity or connectivity to get on.
And here, Franny, they have Board of Ed personnel with them full time during the day, food is brought in by the school system. So it's a much more supervised and engaged process. And as you know, even if you have a Chromebook at home, it doesn't mean that you're going to be engaged in the learning. So this is, I think, a very important benefit during this pandemic for families in Norwalk.
No.
Been about, they've been about, I don't know how many now exists, but they've been about five sites. The two Norwalk sites, the Carver Center. At one point, the Rowington Library was engaged. I don't think they are now. The East Norwalk Library has been engaged, so this has been a real joint effort among nonprofits, the Board of Ed and the libraries to make sure the kids have this additional option during the hybrid period.
Very good, thank you. Any other commissioner have questions here on the library?
I do, Tamara Shockley.
Go ahead. Um, will this continue? You're saying it's very successful and I've read about it. Will this continue after post-Covid? And if so, will you need funding? Say in the fall of twenty twenty-one?
So we haven't gotten to that point yet. We're still waiting. I think post-Covid, we may not need the pod schools. But that's a, that's a good question. So I can, I can look into that. But I think it was really just, you know, while we're in Covid and we need to social distance.
One of the strategic goals of the library is to have as close collaboration as possible with the Norwalk Public School System. So this is one of those examples. They came to us with this idea, and if after the Covid backs down, there may still be, of course, we would very happily consider how to help out.
No, it's very good. Anybody else? I don't have any more questions. Anybody else from the commission?
Yes, Fran, I have a question, please.
Go ahead.
Thank you. The way the description in our in our binder reads is that the money, the seventy-five thousand, is for the main library auditorium. And I, I don't know how the pod got into this, and my question prior to this conversation was, is this money that we might be investing now going to be in any way impacted by the new extension of the main library? Is it the same auditorium that you hope to have within a year? So I'm hoping that if we do invest now, that that won't be ripped out when the new library comes along. And if this seventy-five thousand dollars is part of this pod at the library, okay, that's, that's fine, but it's a completely different thing than what you're asking for.
Well, let me just declare about two things. First of all, this request has nothing to do with the pod. The pod occupies the room where this upgrade will be done. So what Sherrell mentioned it is that the company can't come in and do the upgrade while the pod is in session during the school year, but there's no connection between the upgrade and the pod. Second, you'll see when the Department of Economic Development comes and presents its capital budget to you, that the city has decided to put off the construction of the library renovation for what amounts to several years. And we've been very cautious and stingy about coming and requesting anything that would not last and might be ripped up when the new construction starts. That's now been put off. So we think that the library services need to be upgraded with this request. And by the way, it'll also help be a revenue raiser for the library, because companies can come in and do programs and stream them out. And this will help our rentals of the auditoriums as well.
Thank you.
And anybody else? Sherrell, quick follow-up. Is this going to be the end of the newspaper digitization? Are we done? Or we still need, you know, every year?
One more year, which is twenty twenty-three. And then we will be totally finished.
Very good, good thing.
Franny, just one last thing. We've agreed not to digitize in order to hold our power that was critical to me when I was mayor.
I agree. Take that stuff out, okay? Move it out.
Rip it out.
Yep, very good. All right, there are no more questions. Mike Muschak, you there? You don't have any questions? I don't know if you heard me.
No, I'm sorry, I muted myself. No.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you.
Okay, next we go to the Historical Commission. We have David.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello?
Hello, good evening, David. Yes?
All right. All right, so you may just walk through?
Yep, just please take us through it.
Okay. So these are in priority order, as always. Our first request for this year is the Smith Street Buildings. This is our continuing ongoing renovation of the old city jail. We think we need about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to finish the interior. We've been struggling trying to get all the exterior ADA work done, which is mostly being funded by a grant we got from the state. But there's one more phase of that that's out to bid. We've had our plans redone for the interior and are ready to go on that when we get the funding. And so we're looking for a hundred and fifty thousand to bring that building online finally. Any questions on that?
So did you, last year, I'm looking at last year's budget and it shows that was it only approved at twenty-one thousand last year? Is that what I'm seeing? What's showing here is last year's approved budget that we all received.
That sounds about right.
Yep, so doesn't show what the request was. Did you request a hundred and fifty K last year as well? Or, or less?
Um.
That's okay, don't go crazy. I'm just saying, I'm looking.
I just requested twenty-five thousand last year. Yeah, I just found it.
Okay.
And I got that, and that was to help us finish the exterior work we're doing as well as work with the architects on updating the plans for the interior and all that.
So the hundred and fifty would finish everything that you need to do?
Well, it's what I think I can spend next year and get done. I'm trying not to ask for more than I can actually, you know, actually spend. I think it's most of it, I'm hoping all of it, but, you know, it always just depends on how the bids come in. We're, you know, we're acting as a general contractor ourselves. We're getting the bids individually and just doing one piece at a time and going slowly, but we're, we're getting, we're finding that we're getting better, better bids than just going with a general contractor to do.
Thank you. Under commissioners, if anybody needs to ask questions, just jump in, okay, from any of the, you know, the departments that we're going through. Okay, if we don't hear any, we're just going to move on to the next item.
Okay, I have some quick question for David.
Sure.
In general, not in the Covid time, how many general visitors do you get a year? And does the Historic Commission charge a fee to go into any of these places?
So they, well, we have a we have a public-private partnership with the Historical Society, and they do charge fees for events. Not all events, but some events, and it does vary. In a normal non-Covid year, we have anywhere from eight to twelve thousand visitors at Mill Hill. I think the mansion runs, is running fifteen to twenty thousand in a normal year. I mean, those are the big ones.
Thank you.
I have an embarrassing question to ask, which is I don't know where the old jail is located. Is it over by the mansion?
Sure. No, it's, it's part of the Mill Hill complex, but it's hidden because it's down on Smith Street at the bottom of the hill. You know how Mill Hill is a big hill and overlooks the river. But if you go underneath, down on Smith Street where the new De Scala Head of the Harbor South apartments are, it's at the, it's at the end of that street. One of the things we're doing is actually building a connection up the side of the hill so that you can, you know, get from the top to the bottom. But it was, it's actually, it's the old city jail. It was built, well, a portion of it was built in the late seventeen hundreds, but it was used as a city jail from eighteen forty to the early nineteen hundreds. And it's a really cool building. It had a fire in twenty-ten, and we've been slowly fixing it since then, you know, as we can afford it and have time to work on it. It's really cool. It starts as a jail cells and all that stuff.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yep, no, so I was just going to go on to Lockwood Matthews Mansion, which is our next request, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. This has a variety of items in it. It's not completely detailed out correctly in the in your sheets, but about thirty thousand dollars for the veranda to finish the veranda restoration, which we've been working on in the mansion. Then the hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the next item that's shown, develop master plan for restoration, the carriage house. It's actually only part of that is for the carriage house. That's about fifty thousand dollars for a plan for that. We need about twenty-five thousand to do actually an assessment of the exterior of the mansion itself for repointing and repairs to the wood and all that. We actually have to have a specification done for that. And then the remaining monies is more money to help us with the upcoming move out of the mansion as we embark on our seven and a half million dollar upgrade to the interior mechanicals. So we need a little bit more money to help store. We have to move everything out of the mansion, all of the furniture, all the, you know, everything that's in and included in the storage, and we need some money to help assist with that. So that's what's all wrapped into this, this plan. Any questions?
Just from my education, where is the seven and a half million upgrade to the mechanicals coming from?
So we received a grant from the state for five million dollars, and the city is matching with two and a half million that was approved, I believe, two years ago in the capital budget.
Thank you.
Sure. The plan is to close the mansion at the end of the year. It will be closed for eighteen to twenty-four months while we upgrade all of the systems in the place. So it's a big undertaking. Any other questions on that item?
It'll be great when done, right?
Yep, all these will be. The next request is ADA access Mill Hill and master plan for Mill Hill, fifty thousand dollars. So we've been working on a phased approach, as you know, I'm here every year asking for, you know, I divide every project into, you know, seventeen phases to make it affordable. This fifty thousand dollars is to redesign the parking lot, the three sets of front stairs into the building, which are literally crumbling and the sidewalks as well. So we're looking to fund the redesign of that and then do the replacement work the following year.
Is the city helping out with the sidewalk? I mean, out of that, that department, DPW? But you have to come up with the money. Okay, I'm writing that down when we have that apartment in front of us, okay?
Exactly, thank you. Any questions on that? All right, the next item is the museum collection. This is the ten thousand dollars we ask for every year. We have a museum collection that the city owns. It's worth, you know, millions of dollars. We occasionally add to the collection as well as we pay for conservation and restoration, getting things ready to exhibit. We're just looking to continue that. Nothing different on that.
David, one of the things that I read was the I get, I'm trying to think of the word when I was reading everything. Other open exhibits or something underneath the health department, or what was that all about? Is that part of this or?
So that's where we actually have the ground floor. The health department is our storage facility. And in the future years out, have money allocated, we want to it's a, that's an old space that's configured as offices. We want to open it up. We want to install everything in what's called an open concept storage in the museum world so that it can then be open to the public. Things are just displayed so you can see them. There's not a curated exhibit. But if anybody wants to see what we have, you can actually walk through and everything's protected, you know, in a case or behind glass or in drawers. And people can see the full collection. It's just a way to show everything you have. It's also kind of a better way to store things. So we hope, you know, once we get everything else done, that's, that's the thing we would like to do with that. So.
No, I thought it was a great idea to show the whole collection.
Yeah, yeah, that's our goal, but we're still just trying to get all the buildings fixed first.
Okay.
All right, the next item, cemetery's restoration, a hundred and ten thousand dollars. This is really the cost to complete the restoration of Pine Island Cemetery. There's about eighty tombstones that require professional restoration work, which is, runs usually between eight hundred and twelve hundred dollars apiece. So you know, we think that's what it's about to really finish that. We have the other three city cemeteries in really good shape. We've repaired those over the years. So then it's beyond that. Once we get this project done, it's just on kind of ongoing maintenance every, every couple of years, resetting and repairing things at break. And then the next item is WPA murals. I do have, we do have some money allocated for the Ben Franklin WPA murals. They were never restored as part of the big WPA mural restoration program. We have some money for one, enough money to do one of the murals. We need more money to do the second mural. We'd like to do them at the same time. It's a, the murals are not in great shape, but it's not an emergency, so we've kind of put this at the lower end of our priority list.
Does each mural take fifty thousand? Is that what it takes?
Yes, yeah, we've, we've looked at it pretty extensively. We looked at having them removed and put somewhere else, and that costs even more money. So we've opted with, you know, restoring them in place.
What are the subject matter of the two murals?
One is like early settlement of Norwalk, and then the other is Norwalk Industry.
These are at Ben Franklin, is that what you said?
Yes, Ben Franklin.
Yeah.
They're in the left. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but they're in the Crystal Theater Auditorium. Yes. So if you've got any performance at the Crystal Theater, you see them on both sides of the of the stage. And the Norwalk City Hall has in the Concert Hall similar, but actually a lot smaller. These at the Crystal Theater are much, are much bigger. And and just for everyone's benefit, the Norwalk's WPA mural collection is kind of unrivaled around the country.
And it's the same artist that did the ones in City Hall?
No. The, the ones at City Hall in the auditorium are by John Stuart Curry, who's, and they're priceless. He's an amazing artist. He's featured at both the Met and the the Whitney quite prominently, and then the, the ones in the Ben Franklin are Gruel, Justin Gruel murals.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
So the last item is the Norwalk Museum ADA access. We actually have, we got additional monies last year, which we haven't spent, so we're not asking for any money this year, but we'll be, of course, coming back the following year. As you can see in the years out, but nothing this year. Honestly, you know, I'd like to give you, we'd be really happy if we got our first three requests. We'd be happy to get all of it, but we know that you guys have a difficult job ahead. The first three items are really, really important to keep progress going, so.
David, you always do a good job and you're the Fugle. What's the word? Care keeper, if you will, so appreciate your work efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate all your help. Have a good evening.
Can I just ask one more question?
Go ahead.
I'm just curious why you have the jail so prioritized as your first project? It just strikes me, it just strikes me as odd. You must have some reason. That's why you're putting it first, and forgive me for not being well informed about that.
No, that's all right. So our priorities change pretty dramatically every year depending on, because we get monies, you know, we're working off our priorities. So we've, we've completed the restoration of the three buildings on the top of Mill Hill, the townhouse, the schoolhouse and the fitch. And that's been a multi-year long process. We've redone the ADA access and all that stuff and HVAC. So, so we've got all that done. So, so really the next, we really want to get the jail done and online so that that can be used and appreciated. There's some amazing exhibits we're planning to do there. We're, we're going to have a fun exhibit. The history of actual the jail is amazing, and the stories are just amazing about that. And then the second floor is going to be a repository for all of the Norwalk pottery and be a permanent exhibit on the Norwalk pottery industry. So we're just anxious to get this building back in service. There's also the old DPW barn, the original home of the Department of Public Works from eighteen forty is next to it. And our plan for that, if you'll look and see in the out years, I have some money allocated to do plans. We plan to rebuild that building and turn it into the museum for the Norwalk Indians to house most of the artifacts from the, the Norwalk Fort Site discovery. But, you know, we're sort of balancing priorities. I got my first priority last year was to get the elevator in the museum, so that was our number one on our list, and I got that money, so now it's at the very bottom. It's not because they're not all in court, and it's just, it's just how we're juggling things. It's not because they're not all in court and it's just, it's just how we're juggling things. So that makes sense.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, David. Moving on.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Okay, next is economic and community development.
Good evening, everybody. It's me, Jessica here with Economic Community Development. We have two requests for you this fiscal year. One is the Small Business Main Street Program, asking for $150,000. And the second is the main library expansion project, which you see we pushed out one year to 2023. So the first, the first request for 150,000 for Small Business Main Street relates to the work that we've been doing in economic community development. With the funding that you gave us for this current fiscal year, we were able to launch a storefront improvement program. We were able to put up holiday decorations along Washington and in the Wall Street West Ave area. We actually purchased garbage cans for Washington Wall Street area that are currently being, they're currently being delivered to us, so we will install them in the next month or two. We put the banners up on Washington where the outdoor dining is. And with that funding, we also launched this afternoon a COVID small business support, support grant. So for the, sorry, so for the future.
What are we doing with the garbage cans and all that stuff? And the reason why I'm saying that, because on Wall Street, there was an overflow of garbage, as there always is before picked up. So what are you doing with, with that, with that? What have you done?
So we, yeah, so we purchased 24 brand new garbage bins as well as recycling bins. And they have not been delivered to the city as of yet. But once they are delivered, they will be installed along the Wall Street area, the Wall Street corridor, as well as the Washington corridor. So you haven't seen those changes yet, but you will see them within the next 90 days.
And this is a continuation of what you've been doing from last year?
Yeah, so I think with the city's reorganization, we were able, the city created the Economic Community Development Department. And this is really the first fiscal year that we've been able to request funding. So this is a brand new program that you funded this current fiscal year. And as a result, we were able to introduce all of these programs. And, you know, we believe that they've been really successful. The grant program that was announced this afternoon is basically a $5,000 grant program for 30 small businesses to help them through COVID. So it's been, not only have we seen streetscape improvements and holiday decorations and trying to clean up the areas with garbage, but we're also have the flexibility with this particular program to be able to support small businesses with help of the mayor's office. And I'm sure you can hear the newest addition to our family. So I'm just going to move away from her and her little keyboard that is making lots of noise. I'm going to, forgive me for moving around in the house. There we go.
Okay, anybody have any questions on these two?
Jessica, I'm Brian Banks now. I might have missed something, but does this include the storefront improvement grants?
It does, yeah. So we did storefront improvement program, so we made eight awards. We had $50,000. And what's amazing is that the eight awards that we made, they equal about $45,000. But it's a one-to-one match. So in reality, what's happened in Norwalk is that we've had store, we've had storefront owners actually invest their $45,000. We've matched that 45,000. So it's a really great program in the sense that we've had $90,000 worth of storefront improvement around in the urban core and in the surrounding area. But in reality, the city funded half of that. So it's really an investment and a benefit to the city. We see it as, as not only is it the city funding, but it's actually the storefront owners putting the investment in themselves.
So there's an application process or that's how they apply?
Yeah, so there's, yeah, so there's an application process. The, we basically, Sabrina just joined. Sabrina receives an application. We go through, we work with the property owner to be able, or not the property owner, but the business owner to be able to make those improvements. And it's really a reimbursement grant. So what the owner needs to do is they need to tell us what improvements they're making. We approve those improvements. They spend the money down themselves and then we reimburse them through the grant.
Okay.
So they need to show that the work has been done and it needs to meet a certain criteria for the city to be able to fund it.
You guys go take a look? Anybody go take, goes and does a visual?
Yeah, well, I can tell, I don't have visuals today, but I can tell you.
No, 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 no. Do you, once they, the work is done, does anybody from your office go there and take a look?
Yep, absolutely. Yeah, and as part of the application, we actually receive a picture of what the existing looks like. We receive a sketch of what the proposal looks like. And then we'll go out and actually check to see that what they've done and what they've built out is actually what they've applied for. And it goes, it supports anything from signage and new lighting to if they need to replace windows or replace their door front. It also supports painting. So it's a maximum of $10,000. There's a number of different grants available. Some of them are maxed at 2,500, some are available at 5,000 and some are available at 10,000. So depending on the scope and the scale of what the improvement is, we have maximums based on what the support is.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Okay, move forward. What's next?
Great, thank you. So the next one is the main, the main library expansion project. And you heard quite a bit about this project last year. We have the Belden Ave Library with a total of 48,000 square feet. And the library went through a strategic plan and that strategic plan recommended that the library increase its square footage by 24,000 square feet. So that would be a total of 72,000 square feet. And when we came to you last year, what our plan was, was to look at exercising an option on 11 Belden, which is the property that is adjacent to one to three Belden, which is the first taxing district properly. And what we were looking at was exercising an option on 11 Belden so that we will be able to secure a site for parking for the library expansion. At that particular point in time, we were anticipating asking for the money to secure the option on 11 Belden this fiscal year, FY22, and then asking for money for the construction of the library in FY23. But given COVID and given where we are, we'd like to be able to push that out one year. So we're asking for the 4.885 in funding for 2023. And that would be the money, again, to secure 11 Belden, which is the property that is directly adjacent to the first taxing district property that we would be acquiring to help with the parking situation with the library. That option needs to be exercised no later than June the 30th, 2023. So we have a little bit of time. And then as you see in 2024, we'd be asking for the $25,000, or excuse me, $25 million to actually construct the library. Big difference between 25,000 and 25 million, sorry about that. But I think there's work to be done, obviously, and we want to be able to build, you know, build a, a building committee and a committee that would help us with this expansion. And in addition to that, you know, we have a lot of work to do in thinking about what the design would look like, given we want to exercise the option on 11 Belden. But to be perfectly transparent, we also have a lot of work to do with the first taxing district in being able to understand the use of one Belden in the library expansion project.
Okay, anybody have any questions on that one?
Fran, this is Tamara Shodley. I'm looking at 11 Belden, that's a parking lot. Did you plan to expand the building of the li, the new library into the parking lot? Or is that still going to be used as a parking lot?
Yeah, so we have two schemes that we put together, two schematics. And one of the schematics shows that the library expansion would go on one Belden, which is the first taxing district property. And if you see the map, it's the long, sort of like the long skinny building that is fronting on Belden. So we pictured the existing library being on one Belden, the expansion being on three Belden. And then there would be a development on 11 Belden that would be a mixed use development, but it would secure the parking in the back of the property. So that was one schematic that we did. A second schematic that we did was actually looking at one Belden and 11 Belden, where the library expansion would, would, the expansion would actually go out the back of the library off of Mott. And then we would use 11 Belden for the parking pad. But we would also do additional development on 11 Belden to be able to support the expansion of the library.
So the.
So all of that has.
The four million is just for the acquisition of the land at 11 Belden?
Yes, that's correct.
And right now, you just have an option to purchase? Is it solely with the library or are there any other companies or individuals interested in purchasing as well?
I'm going to say there's a lot of background to that one. Or not, not, I'm not cutting you off. You, you, in case you can answer, there's, there's just a, a lot that we, we can tell you or Steve can tell you offline, not, not to cut you off, okay?
I understand, I understand. I understand.
There's a whole history behind it, right?
Okay.
Yeah, I guess, you're absolutely right. The simple, the simple answer is it's complicated, but I'm more than happy to talk with you offline as well.
All right, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I, I'd just like to ask if there's a lot of feedback when Jessica was talking. I could hear what you were saying, but Brian, maybe you could mute yourself and Fran? If you're not, when, when you're not talking. I think the feedback comes when people's mics are open. Is that correct? Sorry.
Anyway, can, Ryan Baker, I don't want to mute everybody so we don't hear each other. But if you hear, if you hear feedback, then you can try to manage that, will you? Are we all on mute now? Or can we hear each other? Ryan? Ryan Baker?
Ryan's not on, Frank.
Ryan's not on?
It's just me.
All right, then you manage the feedback. So we all, we all don't go on mute and can't talk, so.
The feedback is coming from an individual household. So whoever's doing that, I'll try to mute them out as I can tell, but.
All right, any other questions on this particular item for Jessica? Okay, what's the next item? That you're going with?
So the next item is code enforcement, I believe, which I'm going to present. Bill's having some trouble getting on, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna do Bill's presentation for him. So this is really the first time in a long time that building and code enforcement has come to you with a capital request. And there are two capital requests that we're asking for. One is related to gateway signage and the second is related to streetscape improvements. So the first, the first item is the gateway sign replacement. And that really speaks to, I don't know if you've seen it, but on exit 16, we put a brand new gateway sign in and we worked with Stu Leonard's to be able to do that. So that sign on exit 16 going north is basically what we've tried to do was update the sign. We knew that there was an issue with the sign, the structure of the sign and the sign falling down. So what we did is we partnered with Stu Leonard's. Stu Leonard's put together the plan. We approved the plan based on a signage plan that was done by the redevelopment agency a number of months ago. And, you know, we've gotten a lot of really great accolades for the new sign. We've updated the signage so that it's, so that it indicates where in the city item, different amenities are. We focus more on the city amenities instead of focusing on the particular businesses. So we're focused on City Hall, the libraries, parks and rec, where the beaches are, where the boating is. And we've gone through an exercise to prioritize what goes on the sign and what doesn't. The sign that was put in at exit 16 is approximately $8,000. So the goal here is to be able to replace gateway signage at exits 14, 15 and 16. So we know that we already have one up at exit 16, but we need the second sign up at exit 16. We'll need two signs at exit 14 and two signs up at exit 13. So it really is an effort to help with away finding. It's an effort to expand some of the signage upgrades that we've done in the city already. And I think, you know, what I would like to say is that Stu Leonard's was really great in being able to partner with the city and being able to support the installation of that signage. And I think what we'd like to do is be able to get additional sponsors to be able to support signage installations. But we can't depend on the signage installation support with, at this particular time, because we haven't gone out with a campaign to be able to ask for sponsorship. So what I'd like to do is be able to have in the budget, the ability to upgrade those signs while knowing that we're actually working towards securing sponsorship to be able to have partners in the community pay for those signs or partner with us to pay for those signs. So that's the first item on the request list.
So that, that Stu Leonard's paid for the sign? Or is that what the sponsorship means? They paid the $8,000 for it?
Yeah, that's correct. So essentially what we would do is if you were to look at exit 16 sign, there's an exit, the signage has all of the amenities and at the very bottom of the sign, it says Stu Leonard's with an arrow. So basically what we would say is that if you were to sponsor the sign, you would pay the $8,000 for the sign. And as a result of that, you would have the ability to write your business name on the bottom with an arrow. But if we do not seek your sponsorship or we do not receive your sponsorship or we don't have a partner, we still have the ability as the city to update the signage with the funding that you'll, with the funding through this request. It's just that we don't need to, it's just that we would prefer to have the sponsor because we would prefer to do more signs than, than less.
I'm all for corporate sponsorships. The more, if we can get a sponsor for every sign, all the, you know, much better. Okay.
Okay, the second.
Anybody have questions on the wayfinding? Okay, next.
Great, so the second item is $150,000 each year for the next five years. And this really speaks to a request that came out of the restructuring. So as you may or may not know, the redevelopment agency currently has a landscaping contract with meticulous landscaping. And meticulous landscaping takes care of all of, not all of, but a number of the different traffic islands, a number of the different medians on the roadways. It also takes care of a number of different landscape areas in and around the city. But they also do some of the holiday decorations. They're the ones who put the baskets up, they're the ones who put the urns out, the urns out in the Wall Street area and the Washington area and so on and so forth. So as part of that restructuring that the city did, we created the Neighborhood Improvement Team. And the Neighborhood Improvement Team focuses neighborhood improvement along with blight, along with a number of different goals and initiatives. So what you're actually seeing here is that you're seeing the same amount asked for $150,000 each year for the next five years. But instead of seeing it in the redevelopment agency's budget request for capital, you're actually seeing it in our request for capital. So we moved that program from the redevelopment agency over to the city. And as a result of that, we're asking for the funding and the Neighborhood Improvement Team would then be the, would be the city agency to actually oversee a landscaping vendor to be able to do that work.
Any, any questions on that one from anybody? What's, what's, okay, go ahead.
Oh, hi, hi Jessica, it's Tammy Langdellis. About $150,000, then do you anticipate that you would just basically be paying that landscaping firm that's going to be maintaining all of these different amenities, if you will, around the city?
That's right. So the, what we do is we would go out with a bid and we'll bring on a company to be able to have, take the Four Seasons and have a work plan for each of the Four Seasons. So that includes ordering the plants, it includes planting, it includes cleaning out the beds, it includes all the watering. So these are the people that go around a couple of days a week and water all of the plants. They water all the tree wells. They also put out the urns, plant the urns, they clean out those urns. So the landscaping company is really the above, what we do above and beyond the general maintenance that's required for parks and rec, for example. This is the stuff that is the colorful baskets on the main street, you know, colorful baskets on Washington. It's the roping that you saw around the light poles on Washington. It's the lights that you saw strung between each of the light poles along the main street and, and the wreaths. And so it really is the, it really is that beautification piece and the placemaking piece. And so it really is the, it really is that beautification piece and the place making piece that is above and beyond the general maintenance that, um, Public Works provides.
Okay, what, and I like, I like the idea very much of, you know, beautification of Norwalk. I think little things like that actually have a big impact and make people want to come here. I'm just curious why this would be a capital instead of an operating budget? Because it, you know, you're gonna be doing it every year and sort of, you know, goes away.
Yep. So I think it's a really great question. Actually, Henry and I talked a lot about it, the CFO for the city. Um, we put it into capital this year because it was a program that was existing in redevelopment agency. And we moved it over into a capital budget for this year. I think that moving forward, um, what Henry had asked me to do is touch base with him after this particular fiscal year and talk about it being more of an operating budget item instead of a capital budget item, because it's something that we want to continuously do year after year. Um, for me, it was more contract based where we have an existing contract. It's a three-year contract with meticulous landscaping. It's not, it was three years. There's not three years left in the, in the actual grant, it's, or the actual contract itself. But for me, I was thinking it would be more of a capital item because it's contract based as opposed to operating based. But I believe that Henry is thinking the same that you're thinking, Tammy, which is it should really be an operating item and that operating item could then be a contracted service.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions on this one?
I'd just like to know, uh, who decides, uh, what areas get, uh, decorations or beautification? I'm just wondering how it gets pri, who, who does the prioritization, prioritizing, sorry?
Yeah, no, I understand. Um, so originally because it was the redevelopment agency holding the contract, it was always the redevelopment agency geography, right? And so essentially it was really the urban core that we were focused on. I think the interesting thing is that now that we are moving it from the redevelopment agency over to the city, we will be putting out a new RFP for services and we have the ability to really look at what that scope and scale looks like. Um, to your point, I believe that it was really just a geographic, you know, the geographic overlay was there and then they looked at medians. They looked at areas that were, um, that you could see coming off the highway, prominent areas where the landscaping could enhance it. I think now what we want to do, um, is go through that exercise all over again. The interesting thing is what we have, what they already do, um, what we've asked the team to do is look at, you know, what are there other areas? Are there other areas that should look different? Should the urns be in different areas? Should we be changing the contracts so there's focus on different areas? Um, you know, one of the things that they do now is they actually store the urns in the winter. So instead of storing the urns in the winter, should we be thinking about, um, looking at, uh, plastic or faux plants? That should be going in those urns to be able to add the color to the main street, um, during the winter months as well. So that's deviating off of your question, but I think that we need to decide sort of what that prioritization is and, and go through, um, what that contract should look like and, and be able to make those decisions. But it is focused on the urban core. It's meant to focus on the urban core and also meant to focus where you get off the highway. So that when you come into Norwalk, you're being welcomed by all these really great things.
So as you move, as, as this moves from the redevelopment agency as a line item, um, to your department, did it come with any money from the redevelopment agency or just the line item?
It came with the line item.
Okay, well, we'll ask Brian
I believe that, um, that's, that's kind of a cheeky answer for me though, because I think in fairness, um, the redevelopment agency would have requested the money through this body as part of their capital budget. So it would have been funded by the city anyway. It just would have been funded through the redevelopment agency budget as opposed to economic community development. So, you know, I feeciously saying the line item, but in reality, it actually is the line item with the funding as, uh, request, uh, from this body.
No, I'm thinking other money, old money coming with it, not new money.
No, no old money. We would take the old money. Oh, Brian popped up just in time. Brian will take any old money that you want to transfer over.
Yeah, if you want me to jump in, in terms of the, the other money that might be, you know, available from the redevelopment agency. I think it's, it's not available for maintenance sort of activities. And that's something that is, you know, been the issue and why city capital has been used for these activities in the past. So it's always come from city capital. So this is, um, you know, there's obvious restrictions on the money that came from HUD. Um, and using federal funds for maintenance is, is not typically permitted.
Hey, Brian, while you're on, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Okay, I'm looking for benches at fifty Washington Street. You got that, you got that memo, right?
I did get the memo.
Yeah, not rocks, benches, right?
And if you recall, actually, one thing I did want to pop in on too, just on this item of meticulous. If you recall Fran during our discussions on the strategic plan and everything, there was some back and forth in terms of, you know, who's maintaining this, what's, who's maintaining what, this particular area? And what we're trying to do was shifting this over to Jess is try to create some consistency in that regard. So there's less confusion. So I think this is really just Jess and I's departments trying to align better, um, and I think as, as a result of the restructuring.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Fran.
Okay, where are you going next, uh, Jessica? What's, we, we don't have a sequence. That's why I'm asking these questions. We don't have it in sequence mode.
Oh, I was, no, it's not in sequence. Let me look at the agenda and see what that agenda says next. The agenda says business development and tourism. So that's Sabrina and Sabrina's on the line. I see her there.
I mean, I have the agenda. For following that, I'm fine. Okay, I thought you were, you know, jumping around or something. Okay.
Oh, no, I was trying, no, I was trying to follow the agenda for you guys. So business development and tourism.
Yeah, okay.
You guys ready? Let me know when you're ready for me to go.
No, we're ready.
All right. So I have two requests under my department. Um, the first one is an entrepreneurship micro grant program. Um, so during the year and a half that my department has existed at this point, um, I've noticed that a lot of our smaller businesses that take up the commercial spaces in Norwalk are a majority of people who have lived in Norwalk or been in Norwalk or homegrown kind of businesses that are here. Um, and a goal of the P O C D was to support some type of entrepreneurship program. So working towards that goal, I did a bit of research. Um, I had a few calls with Steve and myself with companies who actually provide this service for an entrepreneurship program. So the two hundred thousand dollars that I'm asking for is not only to take on a firm, a firm to do the educational piece of this entrepreneurship program, but also handle the management of the micro grants that come after the fact. So the way the program works is, um, twenty students or entrepreneurs would sign up for the program. They go through a three-month process. That's all education based, which goes through making a business plan, editing your business plan, going over financing options, talking about permits, all the stuff that you would need to know to open a business. After they successfully complete the program, they're assigned a group of mentors that follow them through the process. And then once they have, um, certi, certificate of completion with the course, they would get the micro grant. And depending on the funding that's raised in partnership with this two hundred thousand dollars, those grants usually range anywhere from five thousand to ten thousand dollars. It just depends on the size of the business, employment, um, successful completion of the program, obviously. Um, and then where the money would go after the fact. Sometimes this goes to rent. Sometimes this goes to paying employees to bring on to help them run their business. Um, but really the firm that's overseeing the entire process, obviously in partnership with the mayor's office and the economic and community development, uh, department, as well as my department, obviously, will oversee all of that as well. And a lot of times what we end up seeing is that some of the funding actually ends up, you know, economically, it obviously is, is good in support of the grand list and support of the community. But it also comes back to us sometimes in, in forms of permit fees and the like, if they're opening up a storefront. So it's not like the grant is just going out and they never come back. They're actually certified new Norwalk businesses. So it's kind of home growing that. So that's my first line item. Um, and that's meant to be a reoccurring program and it happens twice a year. So you can think of it more as like a college course, for example. It runs a semester long, so three months in the fall and then three months in the spring, or we can do summer and winter. Um, it just depends how we want to formulate it. And I would obviously have to do an RFP process to get, um, the firm on board. But I have partnered and talked with a majority of the ones that function in the area right now. Um, so I'm confident we can get some good responses and have the program up and running in a timely fashion.
What's, what's different here? A couple of questions. Um, you know, the Chamber of Commerce offers the small business, um,
Development Academy.
Academy, right, which is, um, sounds about the same, right? They, they offer, I, I don't know how many weeks it's, you know, how many weeks it is, but the same type of thing, right? The state offers small business, um, you know, help. There are, um, there's all kinds of grants and all that from, you know, entrepreneurs and, uh, this is two hundred thousand to pay a consulting firm to run this thing, right? And then, don't you think programs exist already that Norwalk taxpayers have to jump into this?
So the programs that exist at the state level are usually functioned as a loan. A lot of times entrepreneurs can't take on the debt of a loan, especially when they're just starting out and they're really risky. Um, and they obviously have to have some underwriting components to meet. It's not usually in the form of a grant. So the funding option to start businesses is very limited. And then the pool of money that the state actually has to run those programs is also very small. Um, and from the chamber aspect, they run a great program, but it's really not partnered with a mentorship program when I, which I think is the real benefit of this type of program is that you're not just learning about these things from a classroom setting. I think it could be something that would supplement the chamber to say, this is, in the chambers program, yes, you learn about these different things, but you're not actually having the working sessions attached to them. So you're actually getting the working sessions while also getting a team of essentially five mentors for each business owner to then actually physically walk you through the process. So it's a little more hands-on than the programs we have available now. And the two hundred thousand dollars I want to specify is not just for the firm. It's for the grants themselves as well. So you're not just looking at two hundred thousand dollars for a consultant that would pay directly to them. It would probably be somewhere around, you know, a seventy thousand dollar range for the actual consultant and renting space and the actual soft and hard costs associated with the program. But the rest of that money is going back out onto the street to an entrepreneur, a business owner that's gonna open in Norwalk.
Sabrina, you have considered the Small Business Administration, the Women's Business Development Centers and the SOR, for example, that have approximately a hundred and thirty odd counselors in the lower Fairfield County area?
Yep. So there's, they have a mentorship program as well. The state was also trying to launch another mentorship program in partnership. Um, the SBA has the, has the mentors that exist, but these are specifically industry partners and those that actually facilitate the opening of a business. So it's not just running your business. It's the actual permitting process and all the backend. And the SBA helps with a, a portion of that, but not all of it from a mentorship perspective where you could essentially call them at any point in time in the day to help you open a business. And a lot of times, um, as we all know, a majority of small businesses fail within their first couple of years. This program has an eighty-three percent success rate. Um, so you're actually seeing the growth on the street in your own community.
So where you
You actually have, you actually have a program then, which you're taking off the shelf?
Yeah, they've, they've done this. Yeah, the firms that I've spoken to have all done this in different communities before. So they have actual data of the funding that's coming back into communities, the data of the businesses that are, that have stayed successful and are open employment numbers, what's a minority owned business, all of that jazz. All of these companies have done this before and have that data. Um, and it's interesting to see that their numbers have been so successful and they actually have great fundraising numbers as well. So it's not just us paying for the program. They're actually feet on the street, getting funding for their own programs as well.
Yeah, I'll reach out to you tomorrow if I may. I won't take any more time, but I'd like to talk that one through with you and learn a little more. Thank you.
Sure, no problem.
Where, where is this been done? You said it's eighty-three percent the success rate. Where?
I can't get you that information. I'd have to get back and ask for the specifics. I have just their, um, their like proposal PowerPoint, which doesn't outline the specific locations, but they've done them in Boston. They've done them in other communities in Connecticut as well.
Um, is this, if this is an easy answer, I have the question of who decides, who gets to go on the program and what businesses get prioritized? If it's not an easy answer, I'll ask the question offline.
So it's not an easy, straightforward answer, but it will be the, the folks from the firm that are hired as well as with input from us. So we want to focus the program around the industries that we want to grow in that are producing the jobs, um, specifically. So you work with the program managers of the actual firm that's going to do the education to formulate your programming that they actually learn in the class and with your mentors to form a program that feeds into the industries where we've identified that we want to grow. Um, and a lot of times we take that from the state, but there's like the STEM fields, the IT tech type of fields that we've identified growth in. So you focus your programming around that. And then the entrepreneurs that come in on the backend obviously feed right into that program. Um, but I don't think there's a situation where we would ever say no to somebody unless the slots are filled for the class. But that's why there's the two sessions to hopefully not have that happen. Um, and then as well as when you're collecting kind of applications for folks that want to get involved, we can obviously see what the needs are for specific under, other industries that maybe we're not targeting because we don't see that growth. But maybe there is the need there as well. So it's a winded answer.
Yeah, I think too that we really want to focus on women and minority owned business as well, right? So I think as part of the, I think part of what we want to do is understand sort of what the goals are of the program and what the goals are of Norwalk. And so when we look through the P O C D, we see a number of different goals and objectives that we want to achieve, right? So one of those goals was to create a micro grant program for entrepreneurialism. But if you overlap that particular goal with women and minority owned business and you overlap that goal with some of the industry pieces that Sabrina's talking about, then I think what we want to do is, you know, I think the goals will actually be overlapping. Is it an industry that we can grow in Norwalk that we would like to see here in Norwalk? But is it also women owned, you know, owned by a woman operator or something like that? So I think that those goals will actually be overlapping in some way, shape or form. And we haven't really teased that part out, but I believe that the goals that are in the P O C D should really be guiding us on what the criteria is for funding.
Uh, if you can provide us, um, you know, to Mary's question and even to Brian. And Brian, you're free to ask more specific, but I don't want anybody not to have all the same information. So Sabrina, um, provide to Steve Kleppen and he'll get it to us. Um, a little bit more about this, you know, you, you cited some numbers, some metrics and all that. So, uh, I'm not looking for a thousand pages. I'm looking for specifics, you know, bullet points, whatever, right? That we can look at before we have our, um, you know, before we sit down and look at numbers. So.
Yeah, I can send you guys, um, some of the information that I've received from the other companies. They're really short, bullet pointed facts that you guys can scan through and it will give you more information on the program.
Now I'm looking for an executive summary from you.
I gotcha.
Okay, don't just push stuff out and give it, give it to Steve Kleppen, okay?
I definitely will.
Put together what you want us to consider when we look at this, these numbers, okay? Okay, next, go ahead.
So the second item that I have is a hundred thousand dollars for an arts and culture plan. Again, this was outlined in the P O C D as a goal to have one of these plans created as we currently do not have one that exists. Um, so the purpose of these plans, I know I attached some background to your capital budget packages, but the, the grand purpose of this is really to outline the assets that we currently have from a arts and culture perspective in the city, but also prioritize growth in arts and culture in the city. So where are we going to be directing funds in the future? Um, to outline more commissioning of art, for example, and also supporting the arts and culture aspects of the city. So it's really outlining the assets that we have from an interest, institution and asset perspective, whether it be, you know, a statue or something like that, um, or a park. But then on the backend, also creating in those funding opportunities, outlining the assets, outlining future responsibilities that we might have and also directing where, telling us where we should direct that funding in the future, whether that be in, in further arts and public and public spaces, programming or physical art, or if it's cultural investment, all those different types of buckets that we haven't really analyzed before and putting them all in one place. So then that document could then not only guide departments like mine, but bodies also like the Arts Commission as well, the Historical Commission, all of the arts and culture institutions in the city.
So Sabrina, you've put this number one. So I presume that's your number one priority and the entrepreneurship is your number two priority. Is that right?
I would say they're tied, but the arts and culture plan, I think, is something that's really needed, especially since we are now, from the Arts Commission perspective, actually pushing forward public art programs. So not knowing where the assets that we currently have are. So not knowing where the assets that we currently have are and what needs, what spaces need to be filled. For example, we have art parks that just have the base platforms that don't have any art on them or sculptures on them, but we have art to put there. So I think that's, will be a guiding document for not only for myself, but the Arts Commission. So I think it's really important, but the entrepreneurship program is important to my heart to growing Norwalk businesses and supporting businesses here. So I would say that they're equal, but the entrepreneurship program is something that's long lasting and this, that, and will reoccur from a request perspective, but the arts and culture plan is something that will be, you know, done for this year and probably updated in the next five years. But maybe we can start updating it ourselves from a staff level, once it's done for the first time. So that's also an option. So just having that first basis of what's actually there so that we can use it and have a usable document for ourselves.
So $100,000 for somebody to go inventory or consultant, what, what is this?
It's a, it's a little bit of both. So it's, there's also a request you'll see in the Arts Commission budget. That's a little more in detail for the inventory piece itself. But the arts and culture plan takes the inventory and actually prioritizes where we should direct investment going forward and also designates arts programming for the city as well as, it would be like a miniature P O C D, but just for arts and culture essentially.
Now, the reason I ask is I did read the line item with the Arts Commission. So, and you're asking, I believe, $100,000 for a consultant there. So how much of this money is consulting?
So the $100,000 is for consulting to create the plan. The $150,000 in the Arts Commission budget is actually for a public art inventory, which exists, but it's updating photos and evaluating and giving valuations to the pieces of art that exist in the city and finding where they're all located. Like you heard David mention, there's some in the, they store in the bottom floor of the Health Department. So it's really going through finding where the pieces are, letting us know where they're located, assessing the value of the pieces, which, which is not, I wouldn't say that's a consultant. It's really somebody who's coming on to be an art valuation expert. And then also analyzing and taking photos and properly documenting them. Right now, what we have is kind of a description of what the piece is, but not where it's located. And we have pictures, but they're not professionally done. They're from like a phone and they're not accurately kind of archiving them, I would say. It's just kind of taking a picture of it and then putting it back. And not all of the pieces have pictures, not all of the pieces have descriptions and none of them have locations unless they're displayed. So that's the Arts Commission, the public art inventory piece. And then this piece, how that relates is that that Arts Commission request will inform the consultant that this is what we have available currently. And they'll tell us where to go from there, where we should be investing our money from an Arts Commission perspective, from an economic and community development perspective, and from a programming perspective, whether that be from parks or from the private side of things.
Anybody have any questions on this one?
Yes, this is Tammy, Sabrina. Just wondering, you know, in the main P O C D that we just did, there's a whole section on arts. And other than the inventory, doesn't that sort of answer your questions here?
So there is a line item in the P O C D itself that says to create an arts and culture plan. So that P O C D is giving overarching goals. These will actually give us implementation measures that go into more detail on how and when we should spend money and for what. So it goes into a lot more detail than the P O C D is going to go into. So the P O C D would say something like support arts and culture in our urban core. This plan would say, this is the P O C D goal that says support arts and culture in our urban core, but this is how you would do it. Here's seven examples of how you should do it and this is how much they should cost and these are the timeframes associated with them.
But you don't feel that the Arts Commission already knows that?
No, I don't think so. They have knowledge on specific pieces that exist in the city. They have knowledge on what they would like to do programming for. But from a perspective of a volunteer commission, they'll obviously inform the plan to a good extent from an arts perspective. But they wouldn't be able to exactly outline, we should do these seven programs for this amount of money. It will take this long. There's not the capacity there from them to do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just to weigh in really quickly on everything that Sabrina said. I think it's just a huge opportunity for us to be able to really align what we're doing with economic community development, but what is going on with the different departments too, right? So I think, you know, we heard David Westmoreland trying to make improvements on all of these things. And really, I think what Sabrina is trying to do is tie together what's going on in the Historical Commission with what's going on in the Arts Commission and be able to really get almost a ground level playing field to be able to build off of. And I think what's happening now is that Sabrina would like to be able to ask for investment and she'd be able to like to work with the Arts Commission to be able to make capital requests. But the truth is, is that when we don't really know what the playing ground is and we don't really know what our base level is for starting, it's hard to ask for investments and it's hard to ask for capital to be able to ask for another statue or to be able to ask for another piece of public art when we don't really know what we already have, right? So I think what Sabrina is trying to do is figure out, you know, if we inventory everything we have, where are the gaps? And if we were to come to you with a capital request, we know that that capital request is something that's new to improve what we currently have versus something that's a capital request that's replicating or duplicating something that we already have in our stock that we just don't know about.
So is inventorying the city assets, does some of that or a lot of it exist with the historical, you know, David's department there, the Historical Commission, the Historical, I mean, how's that all tie in to what you're asking for right now?
So that would, that would all tie in. The Historical Commission has ownership of some of the art pieces. The city has ownership specifically that on nonhistoric pieces as well. And then the Arts Commission has knowledge of pieces that we own as well as the Parks Department. So all of these are being put together in one plan to inventory them all. So we know from a city perspective as a whole, no matter what department or commission or who oversaw the project, what we have as a city.
Okay.
Can I say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, hi Sabrina.
Hello, how are you?
Good, thanks. I want to just say, I, I'm not sure whose idea it was to put the overview from the American Planning Association in the budget, that five pages or six pages of reading, what is it, 142 through 149. I would highly recommend that everybody on the commission read those. I got a lot out of that. I actually loved reading it and it stressed the importance. So I'm, you know, neutral body right here now, but I'm just saying that that, that answered a lot of questions that I could see kind of floating through the questions from the commissioners tonight. So in terms of investing in arts and culture, that, that overview is a really very good background to put into the budget. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm glad it helped.
Any other comments, questions on this item? Okay, moving forward then, so the Arts Commission, are you presenting the Arts Commission?
Yep, that's me as well. So.
So hold on, is the Arts Commission reporting, where's that reporting to? Was it reporting to you, to Jessica?
Well, Jessica and me for the most part.
Yeah, so under the Economic Development, Economic and Community Development umbrella, we have, we have planning and zoning, building and code enforcement, business development and tourism, transportation, mobility and parking. And within that, the Arts Commission and the Historical Commission live within that umbrella. So that's partly why we wanted to bundle those two commissions into the presentations for tonight.
Okay, let me just get to it here.
Let me know when you're ready. And just for reference, I'm the staff to the Arts Commission, so that's why I'm presenting on their behalf.
Okay, so you got all new, all new items here.
Yes. So I have three new items, but two of them really aren't new. So the Arts in Public Places program was actually coins the MLK program from last year. So that program was $50,000 specifically designated to the MLK corridor to support our installations in the neighborhood to actually commission art. That project is moving along fine. We should have installation by the summer. So they're working on the planning efforts of where these pieces will go, how much we're allocating to each of the three locations that they've suggested. And then from that commissioning artists for a call for artists for each of the pieces to be completed over the remainder of the winter and in the spring, and then we would have installation in the summer. So we actually transformed that MLK line item into an Art in Public Places program. Since that was our first year, this, we tried it out. We saw if we can manage it from the Arts Commission's perspective. It's all going quite well and staying on timeline for the first time for us doing a project like this. Not without its hiccups, but it's all going great. So we decided that we would turn this program into a reoccurring line item so that we can use the $50,000, not just in the MLK corridor, but in different areas of the city. I've spoke with Nick Roberts from Parks and Rec and there's an outpouring of support for new art in some of our public places such as our parks, Oyster Shell Park, the beach, for example, that fits more within a theme for each park that exists. So that's a potential opportunity. Or we can do a different neighborhood location that isn't necessarily just MLK. So what the money actually pays for is a curator, a payment to the artist that actually are doing the pieces to commission the pieces. And those two things, and obviously the costs associated with doing the pieces, so materials and things like that are also included in that amount. And our timeline that we stuck to this time will probably follow the same timeline going forward. So right now we're in the planning phase, the arts, the artists get commissioned around the wintertime, early spring. They do the pieces and the pieces get installed by the end of the fiscal year. So usually sometime in June when the weather is nice and participating and we can do the installation. So that's what that first ask is for. So it's, it's a new item, but it's also an old item.
So are you hiring, excuse me, is a curator being hired for this program?
Yep. So we had three quotes from curators. We'll do a different curator from, for each time depending on what we're using it for. So this time when we were doing the MLK corridor, it was important that we got a curator that's from the neighborhood and is in tune with the arts community that's in that specific neighborhood as well. So that we're getting local artists that have a connection to the community in that specific location. So the next curator would be somebody for that specific program as well. So somebody who has interest in the parks or have direct relationships to the parks or live near the parks so that we could then facilitate a community advocate instead of just a curator. So it's normally somebody from the community that has a direct connection. So I don't foresee us using the same curator every time, even though they might overlap, but we're not designated a singular person throughout the years.
So the money to pay the curator comes out of the $50,000?
Yep. And it's usually a percentage of the amount. So if we have $50,000, they usually take 5%, depending on what the project ends up being. And that's kind of an industry standard, but obviously we go out and get quotes and bids from folks that are interested in curating and go with the one that makes the most sense for the project, obviously, and taking into, taking cost into account as well.
And you choose the artists, what they submit sketches or whatever?
Yeah, so we, we would put together what, so in the planning phase, we put together what we're asking for. So for example, this go around, we're looking for two murals and a mural for a staircase. So those three things would then be blasted out, like we, a call for artists, essentially an RFP for artists. That would say, these are what we're looking for, submit designs to us of what you would do. And then we would select from those based on not only what they would charge us to do the piece, but also, you know, if the Arts Commission is agreeable and the mayor's office and DPW and whoever departments involved is agreeable to the design, that's when we would move forward with that artist.
Okay, questions from the commissioners?
Just like to say that I do think it's important that you select Norwalk artists since we're here. Thank you.
Is that, is that a given?
That is a given. All the artists that we ask for, where we do a blast out to say, even if it was for the banners, for example, we always only blast to the local artist community, which is the real benefit of having a great arts commission that's tuned into the community is that they know these folks and are friends with these folks. So having a curator that's from here also helps that because they know the local artists in the area. So it's always a local artist for the most part.
Okay, when you go to the most part, where are you going?
The most part means that if there was ever a, there was ever a circumstance where there's some unique piece of art that the artist could not do here, then we would go outward from here. But for all the art that we've commissioned thus far, it's only been Norwalk residents or folks that have lived here for a portion of their lives.
Okay, I would support local in Norwalk. And if, my opinion, if they don't support, if they, they don't fall in that category, then they fall out. That's, that's my opinion. Go ahead.
Yeah, hi. The, I want to thank you again. I'm repeating myself, but this is on a different insert. How art economically benefits cities from Project for Public Spaces, I know that organization, on page 161 to 165 in our binder, again, very informative and can answer a lot of questions. And I'll just add, again, I'm being a neutral party here, but I'll add that the WPA murals that we're talking about earlier, were government funded artwork and, you know, in another era. And here they are, we're still, you know, preserving them and talking about them, you know, nearly 100 years later or 90 years later. And so I wanted to just throw that out there. And I also want to have one question, the basketball court at Ryan Park, is that part of anything that? I, I remember reading it and I saw it. I thought it was awesome, but was that part of a city program or how did that happen?
So that was a redevelopment and city partnered project for when they redid Ryan Park. So there's the basketball fields and the doors will eventually be installed there as well. So that, that was curated by Julio Pardo, who's actually the curator for the MLK project as well. But that's all funded through redevelopment funds and choice neighborhood funds and city, choice neighborhood funds and community development block grant funds as well.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Anybody else? Okay, next project.
The next project is one that I already spoke about, which is the Public Art Inventory. So like I said before, it's $150,000 to really get a surveyor in. So we have a public art inventory that exists. It doesn't include every piece that we own. It's only the pieces that we know that we own and that are visible. So if that are on display, there's pictures, but they're from a phone and it's just the front of them and the descriptions are lacking and the location aspect is also lacking. We have art in many places in the city, including the library, including the Health Department, including the Transit District, including the train stations, including City Hall. And we don't have a place where everything's documented and actually assessed of how much it's worth. And we're seeing this more when we talk about insurance from the city's perspective, how much insurance we should have to cover these types of things, especially when we're talking about pieces such as the WPA murals and things of that nature. We just don't know what we have and where it's all located. And like I said before, we also have parks and places in the city that have concrete slabs that exist with no art on the slab. Or we have walls that are empty with no art on the walls when we have the capability to display, but we just don't know where the pieces are and we don't know what we have. So we can't effectively curate every gallery that we have as well. So this document will not only document the, what something's worth, it'll document what the piece is, what condition it's in, the location it's currently in, and give a description of who the artist is and what the actual piece is as well.
Okay, any questions on that one? Okay, then you have the $6,000 for TART, is that the one?
Yep. So the $6,000 is for the Washington Street barriers. So it's with preference of the mayor and multiple city departments to support keeping the barriers up in the future, not only for COVID times. So I made this a reoccurring ask as well. So the cost for the artist, not, not the barriers that are up now, which are print. So the cost for the artist, not, not the barriers that are up now, which are printed, but the ones previous where artists actually painted physically on the barriers. The cost was $6,000 for the materials, artist payments and the tarps themselves. So going forward, that cost would obviously stay around the same. And this would be for the spring installation. So the winter installation is covered by the ECD budget. This one is covering for the spring where you're actually paying out to the artist to do physical artwork instead of a printed artwork. Like we have now, which is basically a recurrence of three different, four different designs. This is different on every aspect and it would be properly curated from the spring since we know they'll be up this year. It's not a surprise like it was last year. So that's what the cost was before, and that's what I presume the cost will be going forward as well.
Yeah, but I don't know what 6,000 covers what? 6,000 covers a?
It covers 20, it's 26 tarps. Six by 20 tarps that cover every single barrier on Washington Street. So it covers tarps, it covers the paint materials, it covers the sealant, it covers installation and it covers the artist's payment as well.
Okay. So you said spring, uh, you know, winter. So these tarps are put on the barriers, the artists are paid to paint, right? Day of winter, then spring, you put new tarps on and new artists? What do you do with the, what do you do with the old things?
The old tarps are usually returned to the artists if they want them, or we can also keep them since they're hard to store. And since last time we didn't get them printed, they were actually painted on. A lot of them are in not the greatest condition. If you went down to Washington Street when the winter first started and still saw the old barriers up, you'll see that they started to peel and some of the art was kind of getting washed away over time. They really weren't meant to be out there for extended periods of time, but we did what we did with what we had at that point in time from a COVID perspective. So at the end of it, there's the option for us to keep them, but we didn't have anywhere to store them this go around. So some artists picked them up, some we still have. So that's kind of the, the life cycle of them at this point. But for the printed barriers that we have for the winter, those we can keep since they don't, they're not deteriorating or anything like that, since they're actually printed physically on the tarp instead of painted over a tarp.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Okay. So moving on to, um, okay. Guess you guys are done.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next we have redevelopment agency.
How you doing Fran? Good evening.
Okay. Good evening.
All right. So we have two items before you today for your consideration. The first is a traditional item we have that we put before you for affordable housing. And the funding request is for 500,000. The entity typically awards about 250,000 to support affordable housing activities in the city of Norwalk. Recognizing that $250,000 can only go so far to accommodate, you know, the great affordable housing need in the community. The redevelopment agency prior to me arriving in town structured a deal with the housing authority to provide mezzanine or gap financing for the Soundview Landing project. So the money that we are requesting today is to actually accommodate that loan, an existing funding commitment, which would enable the construction of 58 units in phase three of the Soundview Landing project. So sort of the general terms, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Yeah, this is a usual request, comes in at 500,000 and it gets funded at 250. That's been the, been the trend. Any questions from commissioners on that one?
Yes. Could you just say exactly where that is? I was having trouble figuring out where it was.
Where, where, I'm sorry, the actual, the actual project?
Location. I mean, I know where Soundview Avenue is, but what's Soundview Landing?
It's also referred to as Washington Village. So it's there on Ring Street. So yeah.
Thank you.
No problem.
So all that, um, South Water Street property, how much of the property is in fact going to be affordable?
So it's, it's a mixed income development. So there are different sort of tiers and they're, they're, I don't know the exact unit mix. It's something that the housing authority has worked out, but it's about a third, a third and a third, I think, in terms of a third market rate.
Okay.
Some sort of income restricted and another third of a, a different sort of classification.
Thanks, Brian. That rings bells. I just wanted to make sure it hadn't changed.
No, yeah.
Is it a private ownership though?
Well, it's owned by the housing authority and it's being developed by Trinity.
Oh, so this is part, this is the part of the Trinity project. This is like the third phase of Trinity project.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay. Any other?
Go ahead.
This project is occupied now?
Uh, phase one and phase two, they've, uh, you know, successfully leased up. I think they actually are at occupancy. Um, this is the, the money that we're requesting is for phase three though. So it's the remaining 58 units that will be under construction.
Fran, could you clarify the comment you made about that it's 250 and 250? Cause it's reflected here as 500,000 and I'm not sure I understood your comment.
Yeah, no problem. Just for Fran's point. Oh, sorry Fran, go for it.
Yeah. Every year, uh, Mary, the, the redevelopment agency, going back to many years, comes in at a request that 500,000 for affordable housing. And the amount that gets approved, whether good, better and different, it just comes in at 250,000 every year. That's, that's all my comment was, whether where we go this year or what our recommendation is, not, no light on that. But that's, the usual request is 500,000 and the usual approval at the city level is 250,000.
I, I just wondered, did Brian have any comment about that? I mean, is that your assumption going in?
Well, I mean, that's how it's been explained to me exactly as Fran presented it. I think the, the total funding need is actually 650,000 based on the construction financing that is going to occur in the construction schedule. So 500,000 obviously upfront would be the most helpful to accommodate that existing funding commitment.
And you mentioned 58 units, but the notes say 85.
Yeah. So actually there, this is, that's the first, okay. So that's, that's the first phase. So we've done two loans in this regard. The first one was for the 85 units and the tune of a million dollars. This one is actually for $650,000 for 58 units. The notes may just reflect, I had a discussion with Henry, so I don't know if that's how it got included in there. But in terms of what we're looking for, this is to fund the $650,000 commitment. For the 58 units.
And just one more clarification, so that 58 units, is that one third of the mixed income that we were talking about?
No, it wouldn't really work out like that. That'd be, be split into different thirds across 58. I'm not sure exactly the unit split that the housing authority has, but that's not really related to the, the, the spread for these two.
Any other questions on that one?
I have a question. This is Tamara Shockley. I'm a bit confused as to the numbers. 250,000 seems rather low when you're talking about delivering 58 affordable housing units. Can you explain that? It would seem to need a, a greater deal amount of money to, to build that number of units.
Yeah, that, that is exactly, exactly correct. And I think what the intent of this is, is we serve as sort of a gap in the financial stack for the larger projects. So there is a lot of other investment that's being brought into this, both traditional financing and also money from HUD. So we're sort of in one position in there. And the intent is, is that, okay, the city puts for $250,000 as you're sort of identifying, you can't really do much with $250,000. So when we could take that and put it into a larger project like Washington Village or Soundview Landing, it goes a lot further. And they had a gap that they needed to fill. They couldn't find a financial source. So they came to redevelopment agency to strike this deal.
You good, Tamara, or you have follow up? Okay. I don't hear anything. So moving on to your next project here.
Yeah. So the next project is also a historical item that we put in for facade improvements. You know, the agency has run a number of facade improvement programs, both in the MLK corridor, you know, and for historic structures. We've advertised that. We've actually, I've been really working to kind of expand the marketing of that. So we get out to as many people as possible and cycle through this money as fast as possible. So this is now the, to replenish those funds and create for historic buildings specifically. So this will be eligible for churches and other historic structures throughout the urban core to, you know, provide the facade treatments and neighborhood beautification in general.
This is a, a usual project that comes in every year as well. It usually goes up, but I'm looking at last year's, uh, what got approved. And it, uh, 150, um, let's see, 150,000 got approved. I believe from the 300,000. So it's, like I said, good, better and different. That's how the numbers come in and that's how they seem to get approved from a city level.
I have this Brian Baxendale. Can you give us a few examples of how you used it last year? And what you're planning to do this coming year?
Yeah. So the way it runs is it's, it's sort of a competitive process. We accept applications. So the community really determines what the needs are, but the types of projects that we do, for instance, are like window restoration projects, new roofs, new facade, you know, new siding, you know, rehabilitation, so that, you know, you're having these structures that may, you know, be deteriorating, particularly historical ones for this money that you want to, you know, make sure, maintain that character that you're, you know, funding for these sort of rehab projects. So it'll be up to whatever we get. So I don't have anything planned currently. But those are the types of projects we funded in past years and last year.
So can you give us some specific examples? As many of us do live here.
I'm sorry, I, I.
Can you give us any specific examples?
Yeah, the, the Church of God for, for an application, we funded that. So we're doing some stained glass improvements on, on their structure. That was one of the main ones. That was the most historic one. We have other programs as well and other projects, but they're more residential focused.
Could I just ask a clarification? When these come in lower, is the idea that these budgets are that the city's trying to control how much they put in because they're leveraging from other sources? Is that the idea of why it's been traditional that way? And I don't know whether Brian should answer the question or Fran should.
Well, Mary, you haven't gone, were you there last year? We went through the, the line by line. I don't remember now. Is this your first?
I was, I was on the phone. I was in DC.
Okay. You were on the phone. So you, you, you didn't feel the excruciating pain like we did around the table. So.
I felt it in a different way, Fran.
Okay, okay. So, uh.
It's just especially on the affordable housing one, I'm just want to make sure I understand the logic. When Brian said it costs 650,000 and we're seeing the same treatment with the facade, I'm just wondering if, because there's some idea because you were leveraging, for instance, with the affordable housing, because there's an expectation to leverage HUD funding and others. Just trying to understand the rationale behind it. And if it's a lot of details, I'm happy to discuss it offline.
No, no, no. The expectation is we have to juggle many, many line items and come up with a bottom number. So where do you cut? Where do you, um, the, the, at least the discussion hasn't been, you know, we do 250 on affordable housing because Brian's going to go and fill the gap with something else. But when we're dealing with lots of line items and having to come up with a number, that's, um, like I said, that, that's how it comes down. So there's, there really isn't thinking, Brian can get it somewhere else or whatever it is, at least not in my mind. We just take each line item as it is and it's come out that way every year through the common council process. And, um, I'll leave it at that and then we'll take it up when we sit down. So I can't give you anything else. That's Mary.
Thank you for letting me ask the clarification.
No problem. And Brian, if you want to chime in with other thoughts, feel free.
Well, that's exactly as I understood it. I mean, you know, you're, it's the tragedy of the commons, right? There's a lot of requests and only so many resources that are available. So I think that's a balancing act that occurs on the city side. We, you know, we put in the request and that's just kind of historically how it's played out.
That's about it. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions for Brian?
Can I, can I just say something? That I just want to make clear to Brian Baxendale, the, uh, because I'm not sure you knew that, what that church was, isn't that the synagogue? The former synagogue, uh, that was in South Norwalk that is now a black church, Church of God? Is that, because there was stained glass window that was, uh, restored there. And I, if that, if, and I'm pretty sure that was the case unless that was a couple of years ago. But that was a historic re, uh, landmark in South Norwalk. And even though it's, uh, you know, it, it changed churches, the building itself is a landmark. And, uh, so it, uh, there was rationale there in terms of historic preservation.
Yeah, there's a great historic preservation component to this whole program. You know, we, we run a similar program with federal funds and CDBG, but they're somewhat encumbered in terms of what kind of projects we are able to do. So the product like this, restoring a church, it's actually not allowed, it's not permissible under the CDBG or federal funding. So that's why the city resources are so important for things like that.
And that was that church, right? The synagogue. It was on the corner of South Main and, uh, Woodward, I guess.
Was that, that stained glass restoration project?
All right, Brian. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Fran. And I'll, I'll reach out to you by email on the other item with Washington Street.
Okay.
Take care. Bye.
Bye. Just so the commission knows, we're going to take a five minute break, the, for a restroom break, if you will, or if you want it. But, uh, I didn't send any memo to Brian. I just, voice wise, I said it'd be nice to have benches at 50 Washington Street where people can sit. And Mike, I know where you stand on the historical with the rocks and all that kind of stuff. So. Unless they.
You mean, you know where I sit on this subject?
Yeah, I know where, I know where you sit on this subject, right? So you sent me a video of you sitting on the rocks and, you know, standing up and whatever. I really wanted the architect to sit on the rock and to send me a video. So I commented to Mike and to Brian and Steve Clapton. I said it would be good if the redevelopment agency could come up with some plans, some money, whatever, and put some benches there for people to sit down. That was the, that's the gist of that whole conversation. Okay? All right. Five minute break and we'll be back. Okay? Real quick.
Run through the budget and then I'll jump in if needed.
I can do that. Thank you for.
Great.
Thank you for allowing us to present to you. The first items are protected crosswalks. Those are those RFBs. You see this request every year and, uh, we install them almost as soon as we get a, the money to, uh, put them up. And so that's for $30,000. The, uh, next request is for the Norwalk River Valley Trail. This year we'll be doing a lot of work on the trail. We're doing the piece, the missing link that, uh.
Hey, Mike, Mike, let me stop you one second. On our, we have an overall, um, front sheet, right? So the first thing on there, and I'm assuming this is the priority or tell me if, if it's not. Like we have the, um, you know, the crosswalks. And then the second item is the safe routes to school. Is that the list that we should be looking at or are you, or are you, or are you telling us by priority?
I'm, I'm sorry. Okay. Yeah. That's, uh, by priority, the protected crosswalks is first and the safe routes to schools, uh, second.
Okay. If you go down.
Do you want? Mike, did you want me to read them out to you as we go along? Would that be helpful? Or do you have the budget book in front of you?
I don't have the budget book. So I was doing it from an old spreadsheet and that's kind of why I think I.
That's okay. I can, I can say what they are and then you can go into the explanation. How's that?
Sounds good. Thanks.
Great. So, um, the second is safe routes to school and we're asking for $250,000 each year for five years.
Okay. That project, uh, this year we have, we're going to be doing Highland Avenue. We're the first safe routes to school project left off going, going north up towards Flax Hill Road, which will extend what we have in the capital budget. So this request will be for next year where we're working with the, with the pedestrian and, uh, bike walk task force and, and the schools and identifying our, our priorities for this, for this project. There's 18 schools. There's definitely a lot of, uh, locations where we can install, uh, or upgrade sidewalks.
So Mike, I'm going to ask you just, uh, if commissioners have questions, they can stop you. Otherwise, just, uh, you know, Jessica, when we're off, you continue and we'll stop you when we need to. Okay?
Okay.
You got it.
I have a question.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Uh, hi, Mike. The, um, uh, Fitzgerald and Holiday Plan from 2012 had the bike lanes on Highland from Flax Hill down to, um, Highland Court. Below that, that's just north of the railroad tracks before you get down to, uh, Rotten School. And, and, uh, and that because the road was wide enough there, are those bike lanes still in discussion? Are you aware? Do you know the background? Because that's kind of like what we've been waiting for, for about eight years now is when that road was redone.
Yeah. We, we, we've been working with the bike walk task force and, and, uh, right now it's, uh, going to be sharrows because, uh, as you know, the sidewalks are very narrow. So to bring those up to ADA standards, we have to pull the curb out a little bit, which makes the road narrower. So what we're doing is going. So what we're doing is going with a, uh, ten and a half foot lane and then the shoulder stripe, which is about uh, four, three and a half to four feet. It varies in different locations. So it's, uh, too narrow to legally let stripe a bike lane, but you'll have the shoulder there that they can use as a as a, you know, safety refuge.
Uh, okay, thanks.
Great. So, um, M zero three and M zero four is striping and signing and artistic crosswalks. And this is a a two year contract for striping and signing. So we're asking for nothing this year, but then we would need to renew the contract for a two year time period, um, as of twenty twenty three. Um, M zero four is the artistic crosswalks. Again, we're not asking for any funding this year, but we would like to ask for funding for the next fiscal year. And essentially, um, this is a bit of a process because we want the community to be able to be the one to initiate the process for artistic crosswalks. And that includes going out and getting, uh, letters signed by different neighbors. And it also includes raising money as part of that. So we want to make sure that we're giving time to the community to be able to think about what they want for artistic crosswalks and also give them that that, uh, that runway to be able to do the work that they need to do at the local level to be able to support that. Um, Mike, we have M zero five, which is the Hamilton Street Staircase. Um, so if you want to talk a little bit about that, I think some background will be helpful.
A few years ago, we did the, uh, staircase just a little bit south of there on, um, Martin Luther King, uh, brought more visibility to it. It it gets heavily used now. It's lighted. It's heated. So people could use it all 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 year to get to the the train station and and the downtown areas. Uh, what what we're trying to do is expand that north to, uh, Hamilton, which is across from Bates Court, also serves another big area of of town. Um, we've tried various sources of funding. Um, we've been running into some roadblocks with that. So we have the design already and and we we really love to build something there and bring bring out the visibility and and safety. So the pedestrians could use it and get to the train station in downtown Norwalk and and back to their their homes and apartments.
Well, you're asking for this in twenty twenty three, though. According to the book.
That's right. Yep.
And, um, as compared to the staircase that was on MLK, you're looking for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the staircase?
Yeah, this one's a lot. This one's a lot taller and 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 a lot more concrete and and work uh, to do this one than the other one. The other one ran about, uh, four hundred thousand, I believe. And that was that was a few years ago. So you also have the inflationary cost as well.
And Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what we did is we did the first staircase. We knew it was four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we actually had asked for funding to be able to do the Hamilton Staircase. What ended up happening is we put it out for bid, thinking that it would come in around five hundred or five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And when we got the bid back, it was actually much higher. It was like six or six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we didn't actually have enough funding in place to be able to do the Hamilton Staircase, which is why it didn't get done. So at this point in time, we're anticipating that it's going to be more than, you know, more because it came in at six fifty the last time we looked at it. So that's where the seven fifty number is coming from.
That's that's very true.
Uh, I have a question. Hi. Um, so I was around and yeah, and involved in that staircase. Uh, and I would understand, uh, Jessica, if you, because you weren't here, um, i- if you might not have an answer on it. Mike might know that that was handled by redevelopment at the time by Susan Switzer. She administered that project, but I think DPW was involved in actually building the staircase. But part of that was, uh, the signaled crosswalk, you know, with the solar powered flashing yellow light, uh, on Flax Hill and then ADA ramps and new sidewalk that ran from Flax Hill down uh, that street, Clay Street down to, uh, the staircase. Uh, so there was a lot of related infrastructure to create a safe route all the way to Ben Franklin School, which is a community center. And of course, I live in that neighborhood and I know that it's heavily used and by elderly and a lot of people with kids. And, uh, and so, but but there was a, there was a, it was a part of a bigger project to get a safe route ADA. And it's not really ADA because there's no ramp on the stairway, but it certainly ramps up, uh, at the stair, at the, uh, crosswalk. And also we got another crosswalk at the top of Flax Hill and, um, uh, a, uh, sorry, signalized crosswalk, uh, which is not at a stop sign, but it's on Flax Hill up at, uh, Low Street. So we got two, and that was the budget for that staircase project. So does this include any related infrastructure? Uh, and Mike, you might know this, uh, when it went out to bid, did it include that other stuff?
Uh, yeah, I did work on this with Susan, so I'm quite familiar with. And and we did get the the RFBs up on Flax Hill at the two locations, as you mentioned. And this project would have some sidewalk on on Hamilton, um, not a whole lot. Uh, most of this is in the actual cost of the the of the because of the rock and everything to get a staircase and the and the bike. This will also have the bike trots as as well as the other one on, uh, at at Madison. Um, another, another, uh, useful thing. So somebody coming from that neighborhood can take their bike, come down the staircase and then go to the train station or wherever they need to do, especially, you know, going back and not lugging it up those pretty steep steps.
Uh, okay, so there's no other crosswalks you're saying included in this in this, uh, project. I guess you won't need, you wouldn't need one across low. Uh, although you might. I don't think there's any crosswalks on low, actually. Uh, but that's such a crazy street. It's so narrow and anyway, the I'm not, I'm not sure that you'd have enough money to really fix Low Street. But in any case, uh, you're saying this is really stairway and some sidewalk.
Yeah, I mean, hopefully, maybe we'd be able to partner if, uh, DPW was doing some road reconstruction or something like that and upgrade the sidewalks at the 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 same time or maybe add some missing pieces. So there is other budget money that we could put towards the sidewalks if, uh, we will take a look and identify a need.
All right. Thank you.
And Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the line items here, M fourteen speaks to the transportation master plan, and that's something that we're, um, something that you actually approved last year. So I realize I'm jumping, but it just ties together. So I just wanted to mention it. So last year we had, last year we had originally requested four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the transportation master plan and and it was reduced down to two hundred and fifty thousand. And I thought with that was, well, originally with the four hundred and fifty thousand or the five hundred thousand, we would have received a master, a transportation master plan, but we also would have received a set of drawings that were really like the first phase of dot design for a number of different projects that were identified in the transportation master plan. So with the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that, um, that you put forward last year and that was approved through the budget, we are now currently in the process of actually interviewing, uh, vendors tomorrow. So tomorrow morning, we actually are going through the process of interviewing for applicants for that transportation master plan. And we need to be able to advance some of the initiatives and some of the recommendations that they put forward through that plan. But I mentioned it, Mike, because it's one of those things where we put the staircase in a couple of years from now, in the sense that when the transportation master plan is looked at, then we have the ability to look at the connectivity between the staircase and low and also the train station, be able to to look at that. So I think that what we're trying to do is say we know the staircase, um, should be done. We know we're going through a transportation master plan currently. We do have new sidewalk money in addition to that. So I think, you know, um, the way that we're seeing it is when we do the transportation plan, we can really focus in on that area, look at the recommendations and then advance any of the plans that we need to with the additional funds that we would be looking for in that M fourteen line item.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, so Mike Yosick, the, uh, M zero six, M zero seven, M zero eight, M zero nine. Um, these all speak to the new sidewalk. So M zero six is new sidewalk construction, which is what we've been asking for consistently through TNT, which is a hundred thousand dollar request for the each of the five years. Um, but we also have a Waiton Avenue sidewalks requesting a hundred and fifty in twenty twenty two. Hunt Street, which lane sidewalks requesting five hundred thousand in twenty twenty four. George Avenue sidewalks, uh, requesting one hundred and fifty thousand into twenty twenty four. And I think, um, again, we push these out. Uh, we're asking for Waiton Avenue sidewalks because we've been asking, um, a new number of years, um, in a row. But I think Hunt Street and George Avenue is the same answer, um, that I just provided for Mike Mieschek, which is we know that we're going through a transportation master plan. We know that there's going to be initiatives that, uh, and projects that are identified in that plan. And part of that will be able to prioritize what we look at and how we look at it and be able to take some of that money that we're asking for in the line item M fourteen to advance some of those projects to design. So, um, so those are, I know they're not packaged together, um, per se, in the actual budget binder that you have, but I wanted to present them as a as a package because they're related.
No, makes sense. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, and oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, just add to that, the 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 designers or concept design of those, uh, Royton Avenue, Hunt and, uh, and, um, George Avenue sidewalks was included in last year's capital budget. So so we have, so we will be working on that, uh, that aspect of it.
So you got design work. You got design work going already, right? Because you got some money funded from last year.
That's correct.
Mm hmm.
Okay, next.
Um, M ten is the Norwalk River Valley Trail. So this is something that we ask for, um, continuously year over year as well. It's the matching grant that we usually provide to the Norwalk Valley Trail Association for work that they're doing. And, um, you know, Mike Yosick's just done an absolutely fantastic job with the Norwalk, uh, River Valley Trail, and it's a huge asset to Norwalk, but in addition to really a number of different communities in Fairfield County and or and I would say that, um, the fifty thousand dollars that you gave us last year for this particular line item, we used it, uh, we we gave it to the Norwalk Valley River Valley, uh, Trail Association as a match to a grant that they then received. So we really are leveraging this money. It is the new money. We know that, um, but it's an asset to the city and the association actually leverages that to receive grants three hundred thousand, five hundred thousand. Um, Mike will be able to give you a little bit more detail, but it is, you know, I think it's a really beneficial, um, exercise that we do here in Norwalk. I think it's a really, it's a good thing.
Yep. We've been working with the NRVT on the, uh, the the Will Walk piece and for the portion of Norwalk up off of Griss Mill to the to the town line. So that's where this fifty thousand, uh, the previous fifty thousand would go. Uh, but what we like to do is some part, some parts of the trail are also, uh, were built into in the nineties or early two thousands. So they need some spot repairs. Uh, we've also are looking at, uh, trees and 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 other amenities on the trail because, uh, it's a nice trail, but there, uh, a lot of the areas lack lack trees. So we like to add some trees. So we'd be working on a priority list with all the various commissions and and stakeholders to identify, you know, actual actual targets for this money, but there's a lot of good uses for it.
All right. Um, the next is M eleven, which is the pedestrian crosswalk at forty Cross Streets. This is also NRVT related. Um, I realize it's twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. The thirty five thousand is for design and the two hundred and seventy five thousand would be for implementation. And this money, um, would be to be able to connect the NRVT to the actual Harbor Loop Trail. So, um, that would be, uh, that again, is related to NRVT, but it's a, it's really a connectivity piece that we're focused on here.
Is that by the river? Is that by the river? Or is that a crosswalk by the river, right? Over there?
Yeah.
Yes, that's right. Just, uh, by the bridge there.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly. Um, M twelve is payment markings for biking. Um, and so we're not asking for any funds this year, but for twenty twenty three and every other year, we'll be asking for fifty thousand. Um, M thirteen is autonomous shuttle pilot. This is, um, funding that we had also requested last year, which is really seed money for looking at autonomous vehicles, uh, West Ave Shuttle. And again, not for this year, but looking for funding, um, for twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. Um, and the transportation master plan is M fourteen, which I've already commented on. So you funded two hundred and fifty thousand dollars last year. We're going through the interviews tomorrow to be able to bring on a vendor to be able to complete the transportation master plan. Uh, because it's two hundred and fifty thousand, we do not have any design that will be happening as part of that transportation master plan. And so the ninety thousand dollars would be able to help us identify some of the projects that are recommended in that plan and be able to advance them to design. Um, on the second, on the next page, which is a hundred and twenty one out of two hundred and four, we have traffic signal equipment. So we're requesting uh, six hundred thousand dollars for this year and fiscal year, next year fiscal year, and then it goes up to six fifty. Um, you know, when I talked to Mike about this, we have, um, seventy nine different intersections in Norwalk and the cost to replace one of the traffic lights is between four and five hundred thousand dollars. So the cost is just really, it's hard to believe, but it's it's true. Um, and, you know, the team is doing a really great job with uh, implementing adaptive signals and really upgrading the the technology that goes into these lights. So the cost, um, the cost is a heavy lift, but really the six hundred thousand allows us to implement one new light or install one new light, um, each fiscal year.
Is it?
The.
Yeah. Is it one new lighter? Is it a when when lights get put at at intersection, there's always, there's two lights or so it's six hundred thousand a whole. Um, not one light, then you gotta put up another one.
It would be an intersection.
It's for a whole.
Intersection, right?
The whole, the whole intersection. So whether it be four, four poles with eight lights or what, you know, whatever the situation is.
Like right now on Strawberry Hill and Beacon, I, is that a whole state thing? I mean, it's a mess, but I see all the traffic lights lying on the ground that they have to install. Is that something that the city's, uh, involved with, Mike, or is it just a state funded thing?
That that that's state funding. They're raising the bridge there. So the signals will not be the proper height over the road. So they have to, uh, uh, raise, raise, raise the height of the signals by putting in new foundations. Uh, so that's all, that's all on the on the state's dollars. There's no city money involved in that. Although we're overseeing, we're we're helping out oversee it, but it's all state money or federal money.
Fran, can I go back one on on number, uh, thirteen? Could someone, uh, for the autonomous shuttle pilot, is that like literally a driverless shuttle? I mean, when I looked up.
Mike, do you want to expand on that?
Sure, sure. Uh, yeah, basically, it it would be that. We're we're working with some, uh, we like to do is get some seed money to pursue some grants, uh, for an autonomous vehicle for the West Avenue corridor, uh, because it has the, it has the infrastructure in place to support it. So we think it's a, it's a good opportunity. Uh, and we'd like to use some money to take advantage of various federal grants uh, to to implement it. It it will still have, it will still have an attendant, but the attendant won't drive it per se. And it'll be like, uh, I think they're make them like eight to twelve passengers.
Mike, when you say it has the, uh, infrastructure in place on West Avenue, what are you referring to by the infrastructure?
Okay, like the video detection, the fiber optic communications, because basically these these rely on, uh, you know, GPS and 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 electronic, uh, signals and everything to to know where the vehicle is and and what other vehicles or obstructions are in a way. So it constantly communicates with with with, uh, the infrastructure. So so you can prevent the accidents and and and, uh, you know, make it make it safe. In addition to its own, its own camera system, it still would have, uh, abilities to connect to the unit, infrastructure.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions before, um, Jessica moves on?
Okay, looking at sure, looking at T zero two. So that's traffic system enhancement. Um, we're asking for fifty thousand dollars, uh, this year and next, and then sixty thousand moving forward. This is actually really interesting. It's something that, um, you know, Mike's been doing a really great job on, and it basically is enhancement. So it's enhancements to existing crosswalks or existing traffic lights. Um, and normally what we see is if there, you know, it could be the HOC system, it could be an audible system that needs to be installed. It could be that someone is hard of hearing or has, um, has, uh, vision issues. And basically what this is, is an upgrade to the existing system for it to either be touchless or for it to have an, for it to have, uh, a noise that is a prompt for people to, that it's safe to cross the road. So we try to, uh, we try to install those each and every year. Um, the next T zero three is the traffic signal at Scribner and I ninety five. I think we're all familiar with that area and familiar with that intersection, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for twenty twenty three. Um, again, consistent with the ask for T zero one, which is the that, um, that same cost, uh, in and around the same four hundred thousand. Um, and then T. And then T zero four is West Beldon-Mott intersection. So again, we all know this intersection well. It's been something that I think has been floated around the city of Norwalk for a long time. We have the, I'm sure Mike with engineering terms would use it in a different way, but I would say the wonky intersection that sort of has many roads all coming into one one spot right in front of the library there. So we're going to be looking to advanced design in twenty twenty-two for three hundred and fifty thousand, and then we'd be looking to reconstruct the intersection for two point five million in twenty twenty-four.
The thought with this intersection is we have, we have a plan for for a traffic signal upgrade there. But, you know, as times change, we're not sure that's the way to go. And we like to get an alternate design for a a roundabout to take a, take a, take a look at it and, you know, vet this with the various stakeholders and then move forward with the construction after we resolve what type of infrastructure we'd like to install at that intersection. There's a lot of benefits to and to both options.
What is it that costs, what about it that costs two point five million? Because there's no explanation of the line item, the construction. I'm just, you talked about a roundabout, but could you give a little bit more detail? Because that's not a small line item.
Yeah, the 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 roundabouts have a general, they cost a little bit more because it's more infrastructure related to them, although the operating and the safety in the end kind of balance makes balances it. So that's why we put the the two and a half here. We'll revisit that number after we make a determination of of what what goes in at that intersection. And there's, there's, there's a lot of work with that intersection because the the roads go in all different directions. So you have to do a road diet there, narrow it down, a lot of curb work, a lot of street lighting. A lot of infrastructure with either type of improvement at that, at that location.
We're hearing a lot of noise, I'm not sure who's talking to what right now.
I think it was John and he muted.
Can I just ask a question, unfortunately going back to Scribner? What drives the lot, what's the rationale for investing in that Scribner junction?
That's that, that's a pretty heavy, heavily traveled route to make the left onto I ninety-five north. And with the opposing traffic coming up Scribner, it's it's getting a little bit more. The volume of traffic is getting greater and greater every, you know, every year. So we're trying to call that to the attention, whether whether it needs to be next year or two years out is still there. But we want to put it out there that the possibility and probably need for it as well.
So driven by volume of traffic or driven by number of accidents?
More so by volume of traffic right now. I think everybody goes through there fairly cautiously because it is a, but they made some improvements. The more the accidents had occurred at a, at Route one and Scribner, that that intersection has been improved. So we'll, we'll be monitoring the this 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 area now a little bit more.
Mike.
Thank you.
This is Tammy Van Galles. Two comments or questions. The Scribner intersection, I will admit, is, you know, there's a tremendous amount of volume going through there every day. And I'm wondering, rather than a stoplight, if you've explored other options like a four-way stop sign, rather than creating, you know, more of a back jam over to Route one, especially as cars come up, say, from the stop and shop direction and come onto the bridge and then need to turn. It's definitely a quagmire, but to me, a stoplight seems to be only stopping, you know, stop, start, stop, start, and you're just creating another traffic jam where like the intersection of Flaxhill and Highland, while it doesn't have the same volume, they left the three-way stop and it flows so much better. That's just a comment, answer it. Then on the one, the West Beldon and Mott Street, I would agree that that needs some attention. I'm just wondering if it would be better to wait until the library construction has started? Because if their plans change, you know, maybe where the parking lot comes in or out, you know, there's a lot of consideration in that particular intersection as well, if the library volume is going to increase.
I'll take the second question first, we can certainly, we'll certainly work with the the libraries. They're in Jessica's group here. The idea is it takes so long to get a a traffic signal installed, years. So it's kind of good to start things now to 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 have them ready for 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 later. And on the Scribner at I ninety-five, you do have that road that comes out a little bit. What is it?
Yeah, Senga, I know the one.
Yeah, Senga, yeah, so it might be a problem to install a four-way stop there. Might increase the rear rear end collisions, but we'll certainly evaluate that 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 comment as as well. Also, with the volume of traffic, it might add a lot of, a lot of delay there that people start just avoiding or running the stop sign.
But in general, don't four-way stop signs make the traffic move more efficiently rather than people sitting and waiting at the light?
Not a, not a properly designed traffic signal, you should have minimum weight because we use the video detection. It, a lot of the old traffic signals had the loop detection in the ground that would break or so you didn't really know that there was no traffic coming. But you travel around our our streets, we 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 do pretty good with the side street traffic and 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 main street traffic. We have various traffic patterns for different times of the day. So they are, they are more effective, at least in my opinion.
Okay, well, they're also a lot more expensive too, so.
Yeah, that's guaranteed.
Just a thought, I would investigate the stop sign if you can, thank you.
Sure.
And may I add two cents? This is a budget meeting, but I can't, I can't resist. I would do a, I go through that intersection four times a day because it's my shortcut to stop and shop and crazy strip on Connecticut Avenue. I would, I would opt for keeping free flowing heading on to ninety-five from the CVS in the area in that direction and then have a, a stop sign on Scribner heading towards Route one and having like a three-way stop and then, but keeping the traffic flowing. Because it will be, I think it would be, a light there would be a an immediate gridlock heading back to Route one, as Brian mentioned. And Tammy, I think you know that, seem to know that neighborhood really or that intersection really well. But a three-way stop would allow traffic to just flow off of Route one, and then people would have to wait on Scribner until there was a gap and then they could just go. But I think that, anyway, it'd be a lot cheaper than a light because the lights cost, I think, fifty thousand a year. Mike, if I'm not mistaken, I think it was fifty thousand a year in electric costs to run a traffic signal, is that correct?
No, they they use LED lights, they're very, we're paying thirty-five to forty, forty-five dollars a month per intersection. So, so you're going to pay forty-five dollars a year.
I guess it was the maintenance that added it up. I just remember the, I remember a fifty thousand annual cost of maintaining a traffic signal. Maybe I'm just inflated that in my brain.
Yeah, it was probably when we had our older traffic signals that were really at their end, the end of their life. Right now, everything's, most of our signals are pretty new, so there's very limited maintenance on them, fortunately.
Okay, thank you, and forgive the distraction there, but this is all information that I think Fran's sleeping.
No, I'm looking, I'm looking down, I'm looking down at the clock and I was going to give you, you know.
No, but this question always comes up about traffic signals. And I applaud the effort at looking at a roundabout, at least on on Wall Street.
Okay. Our, I think we're we're done with transportation, mobility and parking, right?
Yeah.
Unless there's other questions, we're going to move on to the Parking Authority.
Yeah, so we have three requests for you this evening from the Parking Authority. The first P one is parking garages, second, revenue control equipment, and third, parking wayfinding signage. We have Mike Hardin, who's the chairman of the Parking Authority, and also Vanessa from GPW here. Vanessa helps with all of the Norwalk Parking Authority projects. So I think what we tried to do, what we tried to do here was streamline the request. So for parking garages, we are not making any requests for twenty twenty-two, but we are for twenty twenty-three and beyond. We do have money, capital money that still needs to be drawn down. So we will continue to do projects on the parking garages, but we'll be using the money that we've accrued over the last number of years for the, through the capital budgeting process. And as a result, we're not asking for anything this particular year. P two is the revenue, revenue control equipment. And what you see here is two hundred thousand dollars, really across the board, except in twenty twenty-three, which is two hundred and fifty thousand. And the thought here is that we have a lot of pay machines that require people to be touching the buttons, touching the screens, carrying on, using those particular machines. And the thought here is to try to go contactless. So we're going to be making an effort with the Parking Authority to think about contactless pay machines. And this two hundred thousand dollars would allow us to work on actually implementing those devices over the next five years. So we have put it in year over year, not only will we be introducing that equipment, but also then maintaining the equipment as well. And P three is a parking wayfinding signage. So this is something that we talked a little bit about last year as well. And we would like to be able to do a wayfinding exercise. And so we know that the redevelopment agency did their wayfinding signage plan, and that was completed a number of years ago. I already talked to you this evening a little bit about the gateway signage. So we're really trying to tie it together. We're working a lot with Vanessa and the Walkbridge project to be able to think about signage and the way in which people get around the city. And what we're seeing with parking in particular is that we don't have good parking signage off the highway exits. But in addition to that, we also have a lack of consistency for parking signs. So we would like to be able to introduce a consistent parking signage methodology and a and a parking signage style so that regardless of where you are in Norwalk, you're able to find your way to the parking garage, park and then get on your feet and walk through all the neighborhoods. But you see a big number in twenty twenty-six, the one point one million. This we really need to iron out. It really is a placeholder, it's to allow you to know that we're thinking about the use of digital signage and to think about different technologies and ways of using applications to be able to provide wayfinding for our customers as well and our, and the people who are parking. So we're kind of thinking of it in two different ways. One is the commuter parking, which we know commuters are parking each and every day, not so much now, but we know COVID is going to end and that's going to come back. So that's really the contact, the contactless piece. But then we also know that there, we're ramping up tourism, we're thinking about public art, and we're trying to bring more people to the city to be able to support small businesses. So we want to really make sure that people know where the parking is and how to get there. And not only that, but then how to navigate from their parking spot through the city. So the Parking Authority is taking that on as an initiative. And again, the one point one is a large number, it's really a placeholder, but we wanted to let you know that we're thinking about those efforts and that we'll be ironing out those numbers as we move through the fiscal years.
Jessica, I have a question, how much are we generating a year in parking income?
So Mike, do you want to answer that question or would you like me to?
Go ahead, Jess.
So we're seeing around, we have, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, yep.
So our budget for, our budget generally is around the seven point four million dollar number, and we see different revenue coming in. A large majority of that revenue is actually coming in through the commuter parking. So it's usually around eighty percent of our actual parking revenue number. Since COVID hit, we've actually seen a decrease of over one and a half million dollars in revenue, and that is because of the commuter rail stations have been hit so hard. And I think what we're trying to do is understand how to really leverage the commuter revenue, but then also really build out the tourism revenue. And we want the tourism, and we want that, we want people to be coming to Norwalk. And I think the the initiative and the sort of approach that we've been trying to take is really being able to enhance what the public art scene looks like, how to increase small businesses, how to get retail back on Washington, you know, and a lot of the things that Sabrina talked to you about and that I talked to you about through economic community development. I think you're starting to, it's nice to be able to actually present all of the departments one after the other because I think that it sort of shows what we're trying to do with economic community development and how we're thinking of all of these different pieces and how they fit together. So again, it's a, it's a long-winded answer to your question, which was just looking for a number. But I, you know, it's, it's interesting to know what percentage comes from commuters versus what comes from more of a transient customer. And Mike, correct me if I got those numbers wrong, but I think that's, those are fairly, those are the numbers we're looking at.
Yeah, eighty-four percent from the commuters is normal. We are somewhere around ten percent for actual ticketing, if 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 even that. And then on-street and lot takes up the balance of that, yes.
So the only reason I was asking was because when you were talking about the contactless, is that primarily a street parking? Because if you're doing commuter parking, is that the, like the garage at the train station and stuff? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, the train station garages are the commuter lots, they pay monthly online.
So I'm just looking at proportionality of the amount of investment that you're doing for the contactless in relation to the amount of revenue that you're generating? So I'm just trying, I'm not sure I'm clear about what the advantage is of the contact with parking.
Yeah, so I can help a little, oh, I can help a little bit. So so we know that eighty-four percent of the revenue comes in through the commuter. We have a portion of those people who actually pay through monthly permits, but a portion of them do not pay through monthly permits. And if you were to think of something like the Maritime Garage, when you pull up to the Maritime, when you pull out of the Maritime Garage, you have to put your ticket in, you have to punch the buttons. In the Webster Street Lot, you're sort of handling the buttons. And so we're not only thinking of some of the garages, but we're also thinking some of the surface lots as well. And I think Webster Street Lot, we have a lot of work to do there, primarily to be able to either upgrade those systems or create them as contactless. So I understand what you're saying, Mary, and I, and I, and I can understand where you're coming from, right? Sort of, you know, if you have eighty percent, eighty-four percent that are commuter and they're paying through the internet or through the computer within, with, for a monthly permit, then why are you spending that amount of money on contactless? But I think what we're trying to do is be sure that people have an option using their applications. We're trying to be sensitive to COVID and that people don't necessarily want to be handling the machines. And we're trying to create that contactless approach so that we could be not only progressive with the technology, but also progressive with giving people options on how they pay.
Yeah, this, this is also an estimate based from Laz on contactless heads on each parking lot on the street parking, where there's, you know, one head per per space. And a lot of these heads can be upgraded to a touchless thing, obviously, for the, you know, with the pandemic in mind, we're trying to get to a place where you don't really have to touch them at all. So this is an estimate that we're working off of from from Laz. I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
When I go to LaGuardia, I use EZ Pass to park, I mean, when I used to go to LaGuardia. You can drive through an EZ Pass lane to get out of the parking lot. Would EZ Pass be tied into this? That's a great question, I've never, I I have no idea. I don't know if we could attach ourselves to the EZ Pass system, I don't know if that's been done, but I could surely ask. Hmm, you muted yourself.
Oh.
Sorry, I did. That's okay. Maybe it's because they're all Port Authority facilities and Port Authority runs the airports and the bridges and everything.
And the highway.
Probably all easier for them, but no, but it is amazing to drive out of a parking lot. You don't have to handle anything, you just go right through that lane, it's just so nice. It's interesting, I mean, I I guess the only thing that I can tell you is I guarantee I know the exact person I can ask that question to. It's a good question, I'm happy to ask him.
All right, see if you can get the answer before we deliberate.
Because everybody has EZ Pass, I mean, it's almost universal.
Except that we don't, we don't have it in Connecticut, right? You have to go to another state to get EZ Pass.
We don't have.
We don't have, I don't know.
I don't know.
That's correct, Mary. And what Mike said before is also correct. It's under the same umbrella. That's why the airports, the bridges, and the highways can use EZ Pass in New York. It is just one agency that is behind it. In this case, probably we can, I would say that they probably would allow us to use, but we're going to be probably paying a fee since they're going to be, they will have to admin all the money that we're going to go through at them. So I think that will be a loss of revenue for the Parking Authority.
It's a good point.
Okay, are we, are we done with the Parking Authority? Any other questions, commentary from anybody? Okay, hearing none, thank you very much. And thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay.
Last but not least.
Steve Kleppen on the hot seat. You better make it a, you know, really a reason why you need this money.
It's only, it's only 8:10. Do you want me to stall for like 45 minutes to?
No, no.
Okay, well, we have one request and one request only. And it's part of a larger effort to bring the city into a more digital age. What we'd like to do as kind of one of our first projects is to scan the historic tax field cards. Right now, the historic tax field cards, and I don't have the dates in front of me, would be available cards, but they're stored in several locations in City Hall. They're in boxes in the building department, they're in file cabinets, in boxes. Tax collector's office in a back closet. At some point in time, we've been told that they want those files out of there so that they can utilize that space. We utilize those, and the building department utilizes those pretty much on a daily basis because we get requests for information.
Steve, let me, what, this card is what, it's got what information on it? Or what do you, what is it?
That's what I was getting to. So we, the practical applications that we use it for are, say, somebody, somebody selling a house, and it's a multifamily house. And somebody says they're trying to get a loan for a three-family house. And our records might indicate that it's only a two-family house. So we have to go back and use the historic records as a means of verification because on that card, the tax assessor, when they go out and they do their walkthrough on the property, they'll take note of what's inside the building. So they'll, they'll indicate, oh, it's a three-family house. It's got three kitchens, it's got 10 bathrooms, et cetera. And also they'll write notes on there based on what they see in their visit. So we can use that as one, one means of verification of what's inside the property. We'll also, for using that example, we can look at, you know, the 1960s card versus the 1970s card. And sometimes we'll find out that in the 1980s, all of a sudden, there's an extra unit that shows up. And we'll say, well, wait a minute, historic cards don't show that there's any units here. And then we can pull permits and we say, well, wait a minute, where's your building permit from 1980s to show that this extra apartment was added? So that's one means of verification. So it's a good historic record. We'd like to scan that and then put that into the city's, you know, link it up to the city's existing programs we use, such as Municity, which is our permit tracking program, and also, excuse me, to our GIS. So we have everything into a single database. So all that information's available to the city, and hopefully it'll be available to the public as well. So they don't need to necessarily come in and ask us questions or ask us to pull records. They would be able to pull that information themselves. Realtors, attorneys, prospective home buyers, they utilize those records a lot when they're doing, you know, property searches.
So how does that tie into the tax assessor's card, which is available online right now? Is it more detailed? It's what?
That's only the current card? We're talking about the historic cards, and they go back, you know, back to the 30s in some instances.
Would that be tied into that? Or that be a separate, are you, are you working at all whoever, I don't know, whoever put those on? Would that be a combined thing or no?
Ideally, in a perfect world, you'd be able to go on to the City of Norwalk website, you know, wherever this is housed, punching your address for the property you're looking at. And every available record on that property would be there. All the historic building permits, all the old tax cards, all the information. If there was a variance on the property at one time, if there's any violations, all that information would be in a single place. And it would, you know, you wouldn't have to go to eight departments to find records and search high and low for every little bit of information.
So I think with Steve, if I could add to what, yeah, if I could add to what Steve was saying. So there's five sets of cards, five sets of field cards. So we actually calculated that's 150,000 sheets of paper that would be scanned as part of this $150,000. And the interesting thing is that we, when someone comes in, they fill out a piece of paper in the City of Norwalk. And that piece of paper, you know, we ask them what they need. The piece of paper then gets given to someone, and the person goes down into the basement and finds the box. They then put the box on the cart, and they wheel the cart up, and they deliver the cart to the actual department. And at that point in time, the department then goes through all of the papers to try to find the one record. And they find the record, they make the copy, they put it back in. And then basically, the person comes with the wheelie cart again, puts the box on there, and wheels it back to the basement and files it. So this is not only happening for a tax assessor's office, but it's happening for Steve's department, and it's also happening for Building and Code as well. So it's not only, it's a modernization and a digitization project, but it's also savings on operations because we won't require to have someone running up and down the basement. It could be, you know, I could walk into Building and Code or walk into Steve's department, and there may be 20 boxes that are sitting on the floor near the door because not only is it that one box was pulled, but it could be that the address was filed under, you know, it could be 169 Norwalk Road. It could have been filed under the 169. It could have been filed under West Norwalk. It could have been filed under the Norwalk with the West in front of it. So then you end up pulling five boxes to try and find one record. So it really, I mean, it's just, I'm really excited about this project because I just feel like we need to really modernize the way in which we're doing things. And I think this is just a huge step forward to be able to do that. So not to steal Steve's thunder, but I just, you know, I think it's just something that we really should be thinking about when it comes to how the city manages the records that we have.
No, I think it's a great idea. Who would, well, two things, two parts. One is, are you hiring a company to do this for the money? Is that, is that how you?
It's, it's, given the, yeah, ideally, we would, you know, we have to get caught up first. In addition to this, the field cards, our department has all our old zoning permits. We also have all the previous, like, special permits and different things that were approved in the past that also really need to be digitized and brought up to speed because Jessica did a good job of explaining the process, what happens anytime we need a record from the basement. If you came into our office, you probably saw when, even when we were upstairs previously, all those boxes that were right outside of the conference.
We've seen the boxes, we've seen the boxes, yeah.
But so that, all those records need to be scanned at some point in time. You know, we're not trying to, you know, take them all on at once just because that project, probably we would try to budget that over several years just because of the volume of putting that together. And there's another big task that has to happen, and it's a little more difficult on those versus the field cards. They all have to be indexed properly. So you have to index them by the, what's called the district block and lot, which is the identifier for the properties, as well as by the address. So that way, they're all linked to the same record point. So there's a lot of work that has to go into each one of these projects.
So yes, we would be hiring, we would be hiring a consultant. So the consultant would come in and basically take the boxes and be able to scan them off-site. So there's some boxes that we would have to leave on-site and have the consultant come in and scan them. And then there are other boxes that we could give the consultant, they can scan them off-site. So some of the boxes need to be taken off-site because the field cards have been written in pencil. So you can imagine a field card from like the 1920s written in pencil. And now, so off-site, the consultant will have special digital, you know, equipment to read, hard-to-read digital papers and so on and so forth. So the number that is in the budget is a number that Steve got through talking through a different, you know, a number of different companies and asking them to provide an estimate on what it would cost for that consultant to come in and be able to scan all those papers for us.
Bring your mind along, Steve.
Go ahead, go ahead, Brian.
Sorry, thank you, Fran. Bearing in mind, Steve, what you said about the linkage to the zoning permits, et cetera. You have got no other work in the future budget, future years indicated.
Right, yeah, we, this is kind of the first trial to see how that goes. And then we'll evaluate when that gets done and if it gets done going forward. So we did price that out with a prior vendor, so we got a sense of what that will cost, but we haven't put it in the budget yet.
So you're not putting, considering putting in place hopeless at all?
I haven't, I mean, we can, if that's what, you know, we'll talk with Henry, I guess, about that if he thinks it's appropriate.
So I have a question, which is, what measures are being taken by the city? I mean, I think it's really great to digitize stuff. And of course, I mean, it's ridiculous when we're talking about the processes. But I worry about larger cities that are getting their IT systems hacked and are held hostage. I just was wondering if there was any brief answer that could be given about what precautions we're taking to make sure that as we're increasingly digitizing our records, which makes lots of sense, what precautions are we taking to protect the integrity of our systems and not get locked out of our systems?
So I don't, frankly, I just don't have a great answer for you because I don't know what. I know that IT works on this each and every day, and I know that we look to IT for security for the system. So I don't have a good answer for you, Mary, on that particular topic. But what I can say is that all of the information on the field cards are actually public knowledge. So everything that we're going to be digitizing and everything that we're going to be scanning in the system is public information. It just doesn't, it just so happens that we don't really have a vehicle right now to be able to offer that information to the public in a way that is accessible. So it really is an accessibility project where people are able to access the information on their own. But as far as the security goes and hacking of the system and so on, I, we trust that the city does all that needs to be done to be able to secure that. But again, we've learned so much with Zoom and some of these other things with hacking and things like that that I, you know, I appreciate the question. We just don't have a very good answer.
Yeah, the city did, I don't know if they've hired yet, but I know they were funding somebody within the IT department. That was going to be their main job was on site.
Fran, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Steve, this may have predated your era at New Canaan, but I recall about 20, it's probably about 20 years ago, New Canaan set up tents like behind City Hall. And of course, they're a much smaller town than Norwalk, not even a city, they're a town. But they did it all at once, and it cost millions of dollars. I remember the big debate in New Canaan. But they kind of took all the records of City Hall out into the back parking lot, and they had, must have had 100 people, maybe, I'm guessing. But I mean, it was an army of people turning the entire City Hall records into digital access. So I think that was before your time there, though, because this was, this is going way back. Been around a long time. But would it be, would there be an efficiency to look at the whole, all the zoning records that we're talking about, including all the drawings and the special permits, et cetera, and doing it all at once and be like, you know, pulling the Band-Aid off all at once and making the pain a lot shorter duration? Of course, it would be a bit, much bigger investment. I know New Canaan spent millions of dollars on this because it was, it was, I remember the letters to the editor from, I used to read the New Canaan newspaper because I lived in Pound Ridge. And it was, and that's, that was my local paper. And I remember it just being a crazy process, but, and very expensive, but it certainly pushed New Canaan immediately into the 21st century. Is there, have you, is it worth looking at doing all of this at once so that we don't have this piecemeal process? And obviously, it's going to be bad news on the number, but it would be, there might be an efficiency involved.
Well, the other, other factor, at least from my end, is that, you know, field cards are standalone documents. So they have a separate use and they fill a need in a niche. While the other project needs to get done, there's behind-the-scenes work that has to happen on our end in terms of cleaning out the files and making sure there's not, you know, six copies of the same document in some of the files. That was, you know, when I go through some of the old files, I find that a lot. Like, somebody hated to throw out any copy of anything. So we had, you know, numerous copies of each. So I don't want to pay somebody to scan the same document three times. And there's also just indexing and cleanup that has to happen on our end first. So that's manpower that I don't have at the moment to take that part of it on. Ideally, we will get to that, but it's just not my top priority at the moment.
I think though, I, so I just wanted to provide a little bit more info. So I think when the scanning gets really expensive, it's when it, the, it's when the plans need to be scanned to ensure that the scale of the plan is in place. So I think that that adds a lot of, I think that that basically exponentially, you know, grows the budget by, you know, 10, let's say, or even 100. And I know that GPW went through an effort where they did a lot of scanning of plans. And it took a heavy lift from the actual department side, but it was a very hefty number because of the scale, because they need to ensure the scale, they need to index it, and they need to, you know, and it was a really heavy lift. So, but in the long term, I think, you know, it's not necessarily the question that you ask. But in the long term, we'd like to do online permitting and licensing, and we would like to be able to have all this information be transparent. And we would like to be able to digitize all these materials. And so I think that, you know, one of the things that we have been talking about is how does Economic Community Development, not necessarily, I mean, Steve is taking on this portion, but not necessarily Steve's department, but how do we think from an Economic Community Development standpoint about all of these online applications? And how do we get ready to be able to do that? And I think, like, to your point, sort of, what is that overarching number? If we were to do a five-year capital plan, do you take that number, divide it into five, and ask four or five phases to be able to do that? And it's definitely a conversation that we've had with the IT department, which is, could we have someone come in and do almost an environmental assessment of what do we have in City Hall, what needs to be done to get there? And then what applications do we need to be able to purchase from a software standpoint that supports us being able to use all those digitized documents? So it's definitely something we're thinking about. I'm really excited to think that we can get there. But I do think that the first part is actually getting someone in to really almost do categorize and inventory where all those documents are. And then even what needs to be scanned. We know, we know what we have to a certain extent, but, excuse me, if we were to do online permitting and licensing, you know, what subset of that needs to be scanned to be able to get there, you know? And so, and I think we need a little bit of help with that, but it's something that we've been thinking about. And this is really just one piece of that. So, you know, we have a lot of, we have a lot of work to get there. And I know that it's not all just on planning and zoning, but we're definitely been thinking about it from, from the standpoint. I've been talking to the mayor a lot about it as well.
Thank you, that's a very good answer, yeah, thanks to both of you, yeah.
Just a follow-up, Jessica and Steve. This has come up, this digitizing, and is anything on the city level that is looking at records management as a whole, right? Not just department. This come up, came up some years ago with, getting the name right now, another department, they were looking at something. So is anything, you know, I would be looking at from the city's point, records management as a whole, right? Different pieces so that you're not buying the software or whatever. DPW is not doing their own thing, whatever. Is any of that being looked at?
So I think, so IT's taken on a lot of those projects and looked, looked, looked pretty cohesively at the city and holistically at the city. I think the challenge, you know, just to be candid about, I think the challenge is that sometimes we have a software solution, but the software solution doesn't necessarily understand the process that is below it, right? So we have a software solution that's coming in that's meant to fix the problem. But in reality, if the process is broken, the software almost just accentuates the problem and doesn't really fix the problem at all. So what we're trying to do is not only think about how to do what you're saying, Fran, which is really, you know, this holistic look at the city of what is there, you know, how are we managing records and what does that look like? But in addition to that, we're also working on the processes behind the scenes to be able to make sure that we can map the process of each of these workflows so that when the software company comes in or the company comes in that wants to work with us on these things, we actually have the answers to be able to provide them so they can map out. we actually have the answers to be able to provide them so they can map out what that particular piece looks like. From a data standpoint though, I think you really hit the nail on the head because it's something that I think is a huge opportunity for Norwalk where they have field cards that are paper. We have plans that are in paper. We have some of the departments working on Municity as an IT initiative. And Steve's department in building and code is one of them. But then we also have GIS. And so, you know, I think what we need to do as the next step, to your point, is be able to work with IT to say, okay, IT is really the solution finder, but they're the solution finder based on what the departments are providing them as far as what process goes and what we need, right? And sort of how we need it. So if we were to be able to work with them a little bit more closely, then we would be able to say like the GIS speaks to Municity, which is the online permitting and licensing, which then speaks to all the field cards that have been digitized in there. So, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying. Again, not really the greatest answer in the world, but we really need to work with IT to be able to do that. Because IT is the one who does the project management on the actual implementation of these things. But in reality, the departments need to work so closely with them because unless they're, they know what the process is and how to implement the software to do that workflow, it really is not, it tends to be more unsuccessful than successful. It really is based on what the process is.
Agreed. And I, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I can't say how important I think this is as a realtor in the city. We are constantly looking for information on properties and we have to chase around from department to department. It's only the pandemic that has now allowed us to get a field card from the tax assessor's office by sending an email. We still have to pay a dollar for it. And I know that seems ridiculous, but that's how ridiculous this is. You know, if I want to list a property, I have to go over to City Hall and pay a dollar to get a piece of paper that should be in a database. And it, the information on the physical field card that they produce in the tax assessor's office is different than what's online under the tax assessors when you go into vision appraisal. It doesn't have all the same information and it's not complete. And then, you know, as, as a homeowner, they have to chase around from planning and zoning to the building to the tax assessors to try to get all this information. And I very much appreciate how difficult it is to kind of marry all of those systems, but you have to start somewhere. And we've been giving the library thirty three thousand dollars a year to scan back copies of the hour. These field cards generate revenue for the city. And there are a lot of people that work with them and not just real estate agents, but attorneys, title search people. There's a whole line of people that need that information. And I understand Mary's concerned about it being private and Greenwich happens to be one town that manages to block certain information from being out there in the public, but it's still, it's, it's so important. And I applaud Jessica and Steve for, I mean, the IT department, they have to figure out how to marry this all together. And it just should start with something simple like this. It also should be able for a property owner to file a request from the building department without having to actually go into the building department to pick up the form and handwrite it. It ought to be able to be done online. I mean, there's so many simple things that unless you do any work on your house, that you just don't know as a resident, what a waste of time and energy it is as a private taxpayer going to City Hall Monday through Friday, nine to five. And then in the pandemic, you can't go at all. So whatever we can do to make it easier for the consumer or the taxpayer, I think we should do it. Thank you.
But just to clarify, when I had raised the issue, I was raising, it wasn't a privacy concern. It was about getting locked out of access to records.
Oh, okay.
But that's okay. So just, just to clarify, because that's the danger with digitization, although there's really no choice. But as long as we're having to do all this hard work, Jessica, I really appreciate the sophistication with which you explained the issue. Because you're absolutely right. You cannot let the software drive the system. You have to figure out how you want to run the system and see if you can find appropriate software. And I know sometimes you can only get solutions to different pieces. And then getting the different pieces to talk to each other is a total nightmare. So I mean, my experience, having worked in some of this is then you get into the whole issue of getting software that knows how to talk to disparate systems in terms of doing business intelligence. So I know it can get to be very expensive and very complicated. Nonetheless, I think what Tammy is describing about in terms of being able to get some basic information, we've got to start. So I, I'm happy to hear in the greater scheme of things, spending a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for digitizing these records is not a huge expense in terms of databases. So I really appreciate that you all are being thoughtful about how are you going to solve this problem, the pieces? Since we are, have to be making huge investments in this over time. I just hope that the city is also being very cautious in terms of making sure that all of our records only live digitally and then we get locked out of them. And then what the heck are we going to do?
That's a good point too. And just something that came to my thought was during the P O C D, we heard about, you know, different departments live in silos. And I think that's something that we want to take into consideration when we're doing this is to try to get rid of some of those silos and that one department knows what the other department is doing. And that this technology, you know, somehow has to integrate that and it will save a lot of time and energy and people running around City Hall.
Okay. Any other comments from anybody?
I'll, I'll just say that, yes, I applaud this effort. And in our neighborhood over many, many years, we found that some buildings, some owners, many of them absentee landlords were paying taxes on illegal apartments. They were actually being assessed for them. Even though they never had a building permit for it, and even though planning and zoning never approved them, they were paying taxes on them. I'm not saying that happens in every case. But the owners would then come forward when, you know, when they were confronted with this and they had a violation and say, well, look, we've been paying taxes on it for twenty years. That makes it legal. And actually, no, that's not an argument. It doesn't work. But I, it's, it highlighted to our neighborhood association that yes, indeed, the tax assessor's office did not know what the planning and zoning and did not know what building department, like it was, it was definitely, it, it affected our neighborhood, you know, obviously. So I, I definitely applaud it and and I'll just say a note of positivity about Norwalk. Although I hate to use that word in this era, but the, on a positive note, our GIS system is excellent. And when I try to use other towns' GIS systems, like Greenwich, you have to buy into it. You have to like pay, pay to use it. And I think, I think the fact that ours is free and open to anyone online, you just Google Norwalk GIS and you can get a lot of information, including, you know, the property lines. I, I just think that that, you know, I know DPW worked on that and various departments, but they did a great job. So we have done some things right. I just want to leave that.
Okay. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, if, I, I don't want to spend too much time on this, but I do have an answer for Mike's EZ Pass question if you want me to talk for a minute about that.
Go ahead.
The short answer is no. But the, the, and, and there's a, a much longer answer, but the truth is that the technology, the equipment and the processes are so different from what we're using right now that an integration would be difficult. And it wouldn't be a changeover. It would have to be in addition to. So although it's something to, happy to look at, it seems to be quite a mountain to, to, to climb if we are interested in something like that.
Well, thanks, thanks for getting that answer. That was just curious, you know, because.
You got it.
Thank you.
Every car has one in their windshield already. So.
Yeah, it's amazing. But the camera system and the technology and everything is, is quite cumbersome. And, and, you know, we doesn't, we don't have any of that right now in, in the way we do things. So it would be, it would be quite a project.
All right.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you for getting the answer. Is there anything else? Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Jessica. Thank you, everybody who's still on. And we're going to have our next meeting is next Tuesday, same time. Five thirty for the next, next of a group of victims. And this wasn't too bad. I don't think, I think this went smoothly. Thank you all. And Tammy, what do you usually say? Tammy Longell.
Sorry, I had to unmute. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Anybody's got a second?
I.
All right then, everybody. Thank you. We'll see you next week. Okay? Have a good night.
Thanks, Fran.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks everyone.
Thank you. Bye bye. Bye.